Okay, what we have before you is a resolution approving the final engineer's report for the lighting and landscape district. As you're aware, we have several special districts within the city, and every year we have to develop a engineer's report to determine what the assessment will be. In this particular case, the assessment will not be changing, and so we're asking to open a public hearing on this particular item.
Do we open it? The public hearing is open, right? It's open.
It's open, okay. And so, right now I'd like to take some comments from the public.
Oh, from last year? Okay. Hey, we'll, thank you. We will now open the floor to public comments on the public hearing only. If there are any residents that wish to comment on the landscape and lighting District Number One report, please come forward now.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Before the speaker speak, can you just make it clear that it does, it's District One but not District One of the City of Compton?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, Mr. City Attorney, do you mind clarifying this once more for the members of the public?
Yes, the landscaping districts are not the same as the City of Compton council districts. We have four council districts. This does not represent those districts.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Joyce Kelly. And what do I know? What do we know? It's a hearing, landscaping and lighting, but it doesn't cover the districts in Compton. You're not giving us any information where we could speak, or talk, or add comments to what this hearing is about. And I think after the state comptroller's audit, you guys should be more clear about what's going on, since you are spending the people's money. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on the public hearing specifically?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, this is only for public comments, and then we'll have an opportunity to address any concerns from, address from the public.
Okay. But the public hearing went so fast, and I was out in the lobby for like, a few minutes, and... What was the public hearing about?
The public hearing is about the landscaping District One, which is the entire city.
Landscaping District One is in the entire city?
It's the lighting and landscaping District One, which is the entire city.
No compren-. How could it be District One in the entire city?
Rodney Liston, 816 West 156th Street. And I have a question regarding this. Were there renderings of what this was gonna look like, once it's completed, that a person could go on the website, or see what that looks like? And are there any, are there gonna be any charges assessed to businesses along the area, where improvements are gonna be in place? Or would there be charges to people's property tax for this improvement district, or is it covered by a special funding source separate?
Do I answer?
Um, this is the, we'll actually address all of the questions or comments brought forward by the public after we close the hearing. So this is purely for public comment, and it's a matter of record, court record, so we're just making sure that the...
So my question's gonna be answered after this is closed?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to the public hearing? May we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some more.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharie.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes. Commissioning comments? I want to just state that, in general, we usually have a presentation for the lighting and landscape district, just giving an overview of what the district is, which area it covers, and really what statutorily we're doing here on this evening. I think when we don't have any type of documentation, it creates an opportunity to create confusion. And so, I'm just going to request that when we have a public hearing, and even though this is something that we do every single year, that it's an opportunity to brief the citizens on what the district is, what it does, what the funds are utilized for, and to just keep us all on one page. And so, I think there's a lot of confusion as to what we're doing here tonight with this public hearing. And I think we need to be more clear with the public, because a brief summary is really not sufficient. So, Mr. City Manager, I don't know how you wanna handle this.
We have Will Dan Financial Services here, who conducted the studies. I'd like to call them up to describe what they do, in terms of doing the assessments, and what it covers, and how they come to their conclusions.
Great, 'cause I was gonna ask for an overview.
Thank you.
Um, we have Louis Ruiz and Mike Medev.
And is there a presentation prepared, or are we gonna have a verbal report?
Just a verbal report.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, I'm requesting, I know that we received a report, but the members of the public, it's just customary to have at least a PowerPoint giving a summary of what the information that we've received.
So the reports are for public view in the clerk's office?
But, but they still should have something in their hand tonight.
Yes, I'm just requesting next year that there is actual PowerPoint presentation as in years past.
PowerPoint rather than attachments.
Yes, to just give a summary of what this documentation is, and obviously, if people want more information, they can pull down the report. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. The landscaping and, oh, the landscaping and lighting district has, was established several years ago. It's a fairly small charge. It's used to pay for landscaping and lighting throughout the city. Each parcel within the City of Compton, each eligible parcel is charged the same amount, and we're not increasing the amount at all from last year. So, the, we did conduct a parcel audit this year to confirm that all the parcels within the City of Compton are being charged, and also that none of the parcels that are being charged are outside of the city. We cleared up a few here and there, but overall, the results of the audit were good. So, yeah, that's where we stand right now.
Thank you. Are there any commissioners that would like to speak to the public hearing? And if not, could we have the city manager and/or the city attorney address some of the resident concerns that were identified this evening?
I have a couple of, just questions, that's really, because, due to the fact that we didn't have a PowerPoint presentation, but just, just for the people, so that they understand exactly, I don't know if the city manager or Mr. Johnson wants to answer, but what are, what are some of the things that fall under this lighting and landscaping? What are some of the things that have been accomplished, or will be accomplished, or what can, what services can we provide throughout the City of Compton?
The, um, the district covers activities that include your tree trimming activities. It includes your street lighting.
Can you put a dollar amount to it?
The, the total amount of assessment, or the, it's about $400,000 a year is for your tree trimming. Okay, the electrical bill for the lighting that's out there is about $1.3 million, okay? The, the traffic signal that also are covered underneath the district is about $200,000 a year. Additionally, there's $850,000 approximately paid for salaries for the people that do the services of the traffic, traffic signals. Additionally, it cleans up your alleys. It removes the, the graffiti that's in the public right of way. So there's a combination of things. In addition to that, it provides for the annual engineering report, and, and the enrollment by the tax, tax assessor onto people's property.
So, so, so people don't misunderstand, and so I don't misunderstand. It doesn't trim all the trees or remove all the graffiti, but it assists with the general fund and the other resources to provide those services, correct?
That, that would be most correct.
Thank you. And then how many districts are in the City of Compton, as it relates to lighting and landscaping districts?
There's just one district. It, it includes the entire city.
Okay. And one other question, for the people. So the lighting and landscaping is paid on the tax bill, or, how do we pay that, on the tax bill, is that correct?
It's on the tax bill.
Thank you.
No, it's been around for twenty years at least.
Yeah.
Decades. It doesn't increase, or it hasn't increased.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy?
Again, for clarity, so that everyone will understand, because we did not do a PowerPoint or have any presentation, this lighting and landscaping assessment is the same one that is assessed every year on your tax roll, and it covers some of the things that you just mentioned. Is that correct?
That's correct, Councilwoman.
And who, who comes up with the fee?
We have the engineering study, the outside consultant, that looks at the services that are being provided, and determines if the assessment is the appropriate amount to cover the services.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Sharie? Any comments or questions?
No, they clarified everything I had.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk?
It's now time for the 5:45 PM public hearing. The intention to levy and collect assessments and charges within the sewer service charges for fiscal year 2018-19. It's Item Nine and Ten on your agenda. We need a motion to open the hearing.
Some more.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharie.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Mayor and council, Mr. Wendell Johnson will be presenting this item also, under the sewage fee, and Will Dan also did that particular study.
The, the item before you is a, is a resolution of the City Council approving the engineer's report for the sewer charges? Okay. Okay, and, and again, the sewer, the sewer district is one district, okay, and it's an entire city. And this is the portion on your tax bill, which I believe is around $54 on, on an annual basis. This, this assessment covers your services for the sewer, okay, which would include maintenance and repair of your sewer, okay? It also pays for some debt service for, for the sewer, that we floated some bonds in 2098 and 2002. And, and this pays back the, the, the debt services on, on, on those bonds too, as well as providing for the operation of the sewer, the sewer crew, and require permits that the city has to pay to the state for operating the sewer.
Mr. Irons, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions if you'd like. We'll now open the floor for public comments on the public hearing. Mr. Irons, please come forward.
David Irons, resident of Compton. Hey, man, he give brief statements. I like that. I mean, really, it didn't take an hour to tell us what you told us, but is it gonna cost me any more money, as a resident of Compton? to cost me any more money as a resident of Compton? He can't answer the question. No comprender?
Uh, we, this is, this is for public comments, but the answer is no.
Oh, I thought it was a hearing.
You can, you can ask all your questions. It is a hearing, Mr. Irons, but we'll, we'll answer all of the questions presented in the public hearing at the conclusion of public comments.
Well, am I just supposed to be the first person to speak at the council meeting?
Yes, but I'll call you forward for that. Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to the public hearing specifically? Thank you.
Now, I think the City Manager mentioned sewage, and now here is mentioning sewer. I, I'm thinking that sewage is different from a sewer. Now, I read the other day, I found some paper, and it said the city of Compton had purchased one of these machines that clean a sewer. Are we talking about the same thing here?
Yes.
And on this, in your public hearing, it says intention to levy and collect, but on this hearing, it says approving the engineer's report. Now, which one is it? I'm telling you guys are not clear in being clear with us.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. We will clarify shortly. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to the public hearing? May we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Cherie.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes. Mr. Johnson, do you mind addressing the public comments regarding the district?
Okay, the, the, the first comment, I believe, was talking about the parcel, his particular parcel. Okay, this essentially assess all the parcels, in parcels in the city, a flat fee, okay? And this flat fee is used to operate the sewer. Any parcel that actually has a sewer connection pays this fee, you know, in two parts, one, one in April and one in December. It's, it's somewhere around $27 each time. The difference between sewer and sewage, okay, the sewer, okay, this is a sanitary sewer we're talking about, because there's a storm sewer out there also. A sewer is any type of a structure that conveys water or wastewater, in this particular case, it's wastewater, under, under the city. The sewage is the water that it actually carries.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'm the leader. Commission comments or questions?
Uh, Mayor Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kelly did ask a question, I think maybe we need, they need clarification on it because she talked about the collection part.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe you can just elaborate a little on that to make sure that they understand the difference as to what is really happening here, because I know that we have to approve it in different sect, different parts.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Johnson?
The, the, the difference here is that the only one that can order the levying of taxes is the council. So, the, the item that, as it reads in the title, is one is approving the, the engineering report, and that's the report that calculated what the city needs to run the sewer, okay? And the second, it's an intent, because the taxes have not been levied, because the, in order to levy the taxes, a public hearing needs to be conducted, and the council needs to take action to levy the taxes. Staff cannot perform that wizardry, so.
What's a levy?
It's a, it's a levy, assessment, tax, they're, they're generally all the same thing. It's, it's, it's something that's on your property tax bill.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Johnson. Are there any other commission comments or questions?
Yes, Ms. Mr. Johnson, would you explain also in this that what the fees will actually be, will cover, what some of the services, the fees that are collected cover?
Ye- yes, thank you, Councilwoman, for that question. The, the fees cover the operation of the sewer, which is that we have routine maintenance that needs to be done to the sewer. We actually get in the sewer, when we, we, we clean it, we jet the sewer, okay? We televise the sewer, sewer, so we take a video to see the, the condition of it. Sometimes we go in there and we cut the roots out of, out of the sewer. We have equipment and men that are dedicated to this task and this function in the city, as well as sometimes we deploy an outside contractor to, to do this. So, this levy covers all costs in operating the sewer, as well as some debt services that, that the city acquired in order to do some capital improvements on some large lines within the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
It's now time for the 6 o'clock PM public hearing for zoning code tax amendment number 17 dash 020339, and ordinance regulating all off-site and onsite alcohol sales point land uses, and it's item 11 on your agenda. We need a motion to open.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita.
Here.
McCoy.
Yes.
Cherie.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Good evening, mayors and councilmembers.
Good evening.
As indicated, tonight is the new alcohol ordinance for both on and off-site land The primary goals, objectives of this new liquor store and convenience store ordinance is to prevent their proliferation. We intend to do that by reducing underage drinking, theft and robbery, encourage better code compliance, encourage more healthy food options by increasing the potential for more grocery stores, and to eliminate the potential for a liquor store or alcohol-selling convenience store on every corner with commercial zoning. A brief overview of the proposed ordinance follows. This will create new location and minimum size standards for liquor stores and convenience stores. This new ordinance will confer deemed approved status on all existing legal non-conforming liquor stores and convenience stores, requiring them to adhere to new performance standards and bringing them under the control of the zoning ordinance. This new ordinance also creates the new title of Administrative Hearing Officer. This is not a new position, but merely a title for a designated person who will oversee the deemed approved provisions of the new ordinance. The next section will be definition, where the definition of liquor stores and convenience stores is outlined. The new definitions basically are that liquor stores and convenience stores now have to be a minimum of 4,000 square feet. Currently, there is no minimum size limitation. They are also required to be in commercial centers of at least 25,000 square feet. In this fashion, we, we hope to prohibit their proliferation and reduce the potential for them locating on every commercial corner within the city. This new ordinance also defines large grocery stores as major retailers. It also adds provisions for small grocery stores as well, allowing them, in fact, encouraging them to develop in the city. We also have a definition for bars and lounges within the city, entertainment uses, as well This is the heart of the new ordinance for liquor and convenience stores. As I indicated before, they have to have a minimum of 4,000 square feet. They need to be in a commercial center of at least 25,000 square feet. Convenience stores will be limited to beer and wine only, and they must maintain a thousand-foot separation from similar uses, both inside and outside the city. Gas station convenience stores are now receiving a minimum requirement of 2,500 square feet. All liquor stores and alcohol selling convenience stores must also obtain a CUP. As I indicated before, one of the key new provisions of this code is the designation of deemed approved status. Deemed approved status has been used in California through various cities to obtain more positive control under legal non-conforming liquor stores or convenience stores. The first city to do so was Oakland in 1993. Since then, 19 other cities in California, most closely Lakewood, Lynwood, Boxnard, San Bernardino, and I believe LA County have adopted similar deemed approved statutes. On the effective date of this ordinance, all existing legal non-conforming uses will become deemed approved. They will be notified of this ordinance approval. They will be notified of the performance standards that they must adhere to. They will be notified in writing by mail of this new ordinance and everything that applies to them now. The Administrative Hearing Officer, which is an existing city employee with a new title and job responsibilities, will be charged with administering this specific portion of the ordinance, which consists of notifying the existing legal non-conforming liquor and convenience stores, monitoring them for any code violations, and if code violations are encountered, notifying them of their options and the potential penalties for non-compliance One of the key provisions for adopting the deemed approved status for existing legal non-conforming uses is that if they continue to violate the city codes, if they become a nuisance to the community, if they otherwise cause criminal activity and do not attempt to correct this behavior, they can lose their automatic, excuse me, they can automatically lose their deemed approved status, which would then result in the land use approval being revoked, which means they can no longer operate as a liquor store or a convenience store. Most recently, this would have made the situation with Jack Rabbit Liquor a lot easier and would have had their termination a lot quicker. And this concludes the staff's presentation unless the council has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado Díaz. We will now open the floor for public comments on the public hearing. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak on this matter, specifically, feel free to come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council.
Good evening. If you could just pull your microphone up, sir, and state your name for the director.
Yes, Errol Gordon.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of my client, Jerry's Liquor Store. It's an honor and a pleasure to be here addressing you, having, being a native son of Compton, having attended Enterprise Junior High School, Compton High School, and Compton Junior College. So, it's good to be back. We oppose, my client opposes the enactment of this ordinance as it relates to reclassifying his property from non-conforming use to deemed approved use. My client has been a small business owner here in Compton since 1974. He has a long history of employing members of the community and operating a business without having any issues that would be addressed by the goals that Mr. Delgado Díaz set It is my client's position that this change of status of, from non-conform, conforming use to deemed approved use is a taking. That's what it is. It's, it's taking of vested interests that he has in this property and changing it to another status, which carries with it this new overlay of the, the risk of loss of the right to, to do business, as he's done for many, many years. I would submit that the goals articulated by Mr. Delgado Díaz in his presentation were laudable. They are laudable, and we all are concerned about abuse of liquor and how it affects our community, and that was exemplified, I, I read from the staff report, by a prior attempt to prohibit new liquor stores in the city, which was rejected.
Um, sir, your time is up. Being that you are representing one of the, okay, one of the stakeholders or the interests we're going to ask, is you just wrap up, but we do have additional members of the public that may want to speak to this item.
Okay.
And it is timed, and it is a public hearing.
Okay, well.
Thank you so much.
Uh, I would just like to confirm that the board members have received my letter of, of June 20, I think it's June 25th, and that it's being considered, along with any other deliberations that take place by this council in, in ruling on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak on this item? Mr. Irons?
David Irons, resident of Compton. When you move in a city, you look at the amenities, and when you say a bar, there's a lot of bars, which is called on sale, off sale is liquor stores. So, to say this, you got rid of all the bars that I used to hang out. We had about five bars I used to, you getting rid of everything that I moved in the city for, and this guy don't live in Compton, so why you, you don't live here. I know you don't live here because I ain't never seen you in Compton before. So, why should you let somebody plan the way I live? I've been here 66 years. My birthday was made in 10. And I don't think anybody should tell me how to live that don't live in the city. I like convenience. I like, I've been to places like Racine, Wisconsin, you go down the street and be a neighborhood bar on every corner. Why do you make it hard for me to go someplace and have fun? We, I have to go to Hollywood now? We don't have any entertainment in this city? Man, you don't live here, man. I think, he says it's pre-approved, so it wasn't approved. And I'm anti rezoning, and I'm anti gentrification. So, and I'm against a lot of other stuff, but I talked to you about that when, uh, public comments. But you don't live here.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? Thank you, sir, and Ms. Boone, you'll be next.
Okay. My name is Adolfo. So, I've seen this type of, this type of zoning code. The one thing, my question is, how is the businesses in the Compton are actually being affected? And as well, are they actually being informed about this type of zoning that you guys are going to amend today? How is it going to affect the prosperity of these businesses that are just trying to make buy in this community? Some of these business owners do have kids, and they do what they need to sell, either it's alcohol in their stores, to make it to where they can reach clientele a little more better. And at the same time, it brings back revenue into the city, have projects to fix parks, have projects to fix streets. It brings back revenue. Now, segregating and choosing specific businesses do have the right to not have the subal alcohol? It's gentrification. You guys are choosing to exclude businesses, and my concern as the Chamber of Commerce that represents Latinos and minority business owners, they don't know what is going on to this aspect that is brought up to the City Council, and that's brought up to the public. The people that are here today, they know, but not- The people that are here today, they know, but not all the other businesses throughout the city of Compton, that each district that you represent. And I think that the city lacks of the transparency, especially for these business owners that are paying taxes here in the city of Compton. As the executive director, I have no choice but to stand and advocate for these businesses. And that's what I think you guys should do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boone?
Lynn Boone, City of Compton. My first question is, what brought this on? It's been less than two years ago, over two hundred people in Compton, because we collected the signatures in regards to the liquor store on Rosecrans. And councilperson in District Four even questioned it. There's a store on Rosecrans that was illegally opened. They went before the planning commission, and the planning commission denied them to open up and sell liquor. Because all what you are addressing today, they meant that. I mean, they were totally illegal. They're too close to a church, they're too close to another liquor store, which happens to be Jerry's Liquor. They're right across the street from an apartment building where the gangbangers used to attack people's cars when the train would go by. They're right across from an elementary school. They have an illegal liquor, uh, store sign on the front of their store. But yet and still, when they came before this council, you guys voted to let them open. Everything that you have up there, they meet those requirements, but you allow them to open. But yet today, you are trying to establish an ordinance that says that these liquor stores cannot open up. What brought this on? And then, that same liquor store donated money to a campaign for councilperson in District Two and for Ms. Brown. So what brought this on today? I'm questioning this. And today, they have a liquor store sign on the outside of their building that doesn't meet the requirements of our own city ordinance. And you can ask this person standing up there if that sign is not still out there. So, I mean, the inconsistency of this council is just so bright, it's unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak on the public hearing? And then the commission will have an opportunity to speak as well. May we have a motion to close the public hearing? Roll call?
Councilpersons, Rita.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes. Commission comments?
I will just, I will just state to clarify for the record, it was erroneously stated that, and I can't speak for other members on the council, that campaign contributions were received, but I can say that on my end, I've never received a campaign contribution from a liquor store. And so, that's for the record. Campaign contributions are a part of public record. You feel free to go to the city clerk's office and pull them for yourself. And I just wanted to clarify that for the record. And when I make my decisions, I make them of clear conscience, and I'm happy to see this item coming forward. It's unfortunate when we have to piecemeal items that come before the planning commission and the council because our city codes are so outdated. But updating our ordinances are something that should happen on a continual basis. It's not something that should han, happen once a year, or every five years, even every thirty years, or something that should be going on at all times so that we can stay up to date and stay in line with what our best practice is and also to address the specific needs of our city. Because no city is the same. We're like, they're as individual and unique as fingerprints. And so, we're going to continue to update municipal codes. And there's opportunities when items continue to come to the council that, first of all, when things come to the planning commission and there's no decision that's made and a standard item comes forward to the council, it unfortunately politicizes basic doing business. And so, our goal is to be able to alleviate these issues from coming to us repeatedly by putting together an update in our code, giving the opportunity for the business community, for residents to speak on these items. And then we can all pass an actual piece of policy that reflects the wishes of our community. And this is what this forum is for. And so, we've heard from members of the public, we've heard staff actually explain what this piece of legislation is and what it will do. And then we have an opportunity as a council body to move the city forward. That's what we were elected to do. So I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Commissioner Sharif?
Oh.
Commissioner McCoy?
Madam Mayor, Ms. Boone came, and she was here at the last time dealing with the D and D on Rosecrans. And I knew there was some issues there with the community and what their concerns were. And they were very, they articulated quite well what their concerns were as far as their liquor store is concerned. However, we had a moratorium in place from, I think it expired in October 2018, 2017. And I was really hoping that this would have came forth prior to the expiration of the moratorium. Unfortunately, it's just now getting to us for us to approve. And I, in listening to the presentation, when we take a look at the city and where we're going, we do have to continue to update our ordinances and make sure that we are really making the necessary changes in order for us to be able to move our city forward. And especially to move it forward in the manner in which the, the citizens would like us to do so. And by them coming to this city council meeting and regarding that liquor store, I think this is what brought this on, Ms. Boone. Unfortunately, it's just taking a little more time than anticipated. But this is what really brought this, this particular ordinance to the, where we are today. And that's why we're here now, trying to make a, we'll be making a decision about it today. And hopefully, we can get this support from the council and to address it. Thank you, to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question. Mr. Delgado Díaz, how will this affect the existing liquor stores or convenience stores? If they're already in existence, will this affect them in any way?
Well, there's two categories of existing convenience liquor stores, those with CUPs and those without. For those CUP, liquor stores and convenience stores that sell alcohol that have a CUP, it's no effect. The CUPs that were previously approved govern. What deemed approved and what this specific ordinance will control are those liquor stores, convenience stores, that are so old, they predate the zoning code requirements for CUP. They're basically so old, they just have a business license and no approvals whatsoever. So this ordinance will place them under a new category deemed approved. It'll remove the legal nonconforming and put them under more positive control of the zoning ordinance. It'll attach performance standards, which are basically, you can't create a nuisance, you can't let people drink in your parking lot, you have to have security camera, you have to have light, you can't allow loitering, basically all just standard requirements. So, if you're an existing liquor store, convenience store, it's basically going to just say you need to be a good operator. It's not going to require you to expend any money to approve your parking lot, put up new signs, repaint your building, do anything, new landscaping. If you're operating now and you're in compliance with the current codes, there's no outstanding violations, its net effect is nil. It's only if you violate the current municipal codes that now we have more positive control.
Thank you. Hopefully, that was clear to some of the concerns that were expressed by the public during the public hearing. Mr. City Attorney, did you want to weigh in as well on this matter?
Well, I concur with Mr. Delgado Díaz's statement. I can add that the Californian Constitution gives counties and cities its police powers. And a derivative of that is the land use regulations that the city has. And that's what's evidenced here. It's, in my opinion, constitutional and reasonable to ask that these businesses become a partner in assisting us in a nuisance-free environment. The business owner may believe that the onus is squarely on law enforcement and city officials, but this ordinance would bring them into that partnership and would ask for their assistance. It also provides due process, so whatever concerns the city may have, they have an opportunity to be heard and a day in court, so to speak. So I think the ordinance covers both issues, the cities, as well as granting the business owners due process for any concerns we may present to them.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. City Attorney, so to be clear to the, the business owners that are listening for the information to be passed on, this does not, or will not, close down an existing seller of liquor, liquor store, or store, or restaurant that already is permitted to sell liquor. Is that correct?
There is no immediate or automatic closure of a business. This, the ordinance allows the city, as staff was stating, there are performance standards. And hopefully, those issues are resolved. So there is no closure of businesses.
Exactly. So this ordinance will not go and close down any existing store unless they don't comply with the nuisance and the ordinance. And, and secondly, that the only way this ordinance will affect a liquor license here in the city of Compton is if it's sold or transferred to another name, correct?
I didn't follow that statement. I'm sorry. Say it again.
Okay. So if a liquor store is sold, and the liquor license is sold, then it, this ordinance will affect that?
Yes. If there's a, a proper transfer, it's still under the ordinance.
It's still under the ordinance?
Yes.
So they would have to apply for a liquor license if it's sold or transferred to another name, the liquor license?
If it's a new, and you can weigh in, if it's a new location, then it's completely new under the ordinance. And the size requirements, everything comes into compliance. If it's existing, then we're just dealing with the deemed approved performance standards of whoever holds that license.
So maybe I didn't critique my question correctly. So if I have a, a Z and Z liquor store and I sell it to Mr. Smith, then they may not be able to have the liquor, liquor license in that same location if it doesn't meet the criteria of this ordinance?
The license is required, the license is governed by the state.
Right.
ABC has full control over granting of the license.
Okay.
The city has control over the land use. So if the land use is the same, it would be considered this existing.
Oh. Even if it's transferred to another name?
If it moves to a new land use, then it's new in all the requirements.
Okay. But if it's in the same location, the land use doesn't have to go through a whole new process, planning commission and?
No. No, so ABC changed their, to my understanding, ABC, they changed their regulations some time ago that governed, in the past, people were able to sell their liquor license to another individual, and that individual was able to take that license someplace else as long as it was in that jurisdiction. But currently, the law is that when a liquor license is housed at a certain location, that liquor license is tied to that location. And so, as long as that individual business owner is selling that business and license at that same location, a new owner can take control of that license and assume operations as long as it's in that same location and there isn't a change.
I think we weigh, we weigh in.
Yeah, we weigh in because you still got to get a business license.
You still have to get a business license, but I'm saying ABC, the, the license is still effective by the alcohol and beverage control because that, that's a separate jurisdiction.
Right. The, the license may still be good, but based on our new ordinance and size of location, they may not be able to take that liquor license, from how I understand it. They may not be able to take that liquor license that's granted by ABC and use it in this facility that's based on the size. Because once it transfers, I think, the way I understand it, Mr. City Attorney, once it transfers to another name, it starts off, you gotta go through the whole process.
Well, if Mr. Delgado Díaz, you can clarify, because there's two scenarios. This, according to your presentation, the ordinance assumes that if there is an existing operation of a liquor store or a license in operation, and it's a nonconforming use, this ordinance would take those nonconforming use and bring them under our ordinance as it exists today.
That is correct. If you're an existing legal nonconforming liquor store or convenience store, you now are, or you now have deemed approved status and you have to adhere to performance standards. If you decide to sell your liquor store or convenience store, you're perfectly free to do so. The new owner, assuming they can pass ABC standards and get a license in their name issued for that location, they can continue operating just as if they were the original owner. The deemed approved status, the performance standards apply to the site, the actual business, the physical location. Who owns it, whose name's on the ABC license doesn't matter to the ordinance. How the business is conducted at that location matters.
So, so now, now I don't, I'm not clear. Because in our ordinance, if you say you have to be a certain size?
Those are for new, completely new liquor stores.
Not to new owner, or not to a new liquor, liquor store.
Not to a new owner, to a new business.
Ah.
So if you have an existing business and you just want to change ownership, nothing happens. If you have an existing business but want to move it to a new location or even expand, then the new ordinance applies.
So this ordinance essentially, just for clarification purposes, really provides amnesty to those nonconforming uses that are currently operable, but they're legal.
Yes.
So this allows them to now be legal and still have to operate under the city's performance standards.
Yes, they're no longer in a gray area of legal nonconforming. Now, in a sense, they're considered conforming land uses, and that's what I mentioned. They're now under the positive control of the zoning ordinance through this ordinance.
And then for instances where, and there was an applicant that received their CUP, their conditional use permit, they still receive the same protections under the new ordinance as long as they meet the performance standards. So they're still able to transfer their business with that CUP for that location?
Yes, the CUP is run with the land, not the person.
I just clarified him for the record because there was a concern from one of our members of the public. The ordinance is attached to the council agenda. Mr. Delgado Díaz, could you just confirm that this is, this language that we have discussed is a part of the written ordinance that is before us on tonight?
Yes, it is written in there that this, if you have, excuse me, if you are a legal nonconforming, you're now deemed approved. If you're deemed approved, you have performance standards to adhere to. If you violate those standards, there's a process you go through where the administrative hearing officer conducts a hearing to find out, is the violation real or not? Attempt corrective action, if not, revoke your status. If you, as the business owner, disagree with that, you can appeal to the planning commission. If the planning commission, or you disagree with their decision, you can appeal to the council. Basically, it follows the CUP approval, or excuse me, appeal process.
Thank you for the clarification. Are there any other council comments on the item? Madam City Clerk, could we go, actually, go free to, for support? We didn't go to, directly to all the other items, we'll just keep going. Thank you.
It's now time for the 6:15 PM public hearing for the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. It's item number twelve on your agenda. We need a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second, roll call?
Councilpersons, Rita.
Yes.
Delvaughn.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is the two thousand eighteen budget. Uh, we also included public works, um, in this particular budget. And we also, I want, first of all, I wanna thank, uh, the budget team. Um, and that includes the city attorney who contributed to this budget to make it balanced. Last week, if you recall, we had about a one point six million dollar shortfall in this budget. Uh, we were talking about possibly laying off employees, um, out of necessity. And, uh, the staff worked feverishly over the weekend and since last week to bridge that gap. So Trefina Simmons, Mr. Lawrence Adams, Rafela King, our controller. Um, also Rafela, could you come up and maybe assist in the front? Uh, and everyone else who participated, uh, in putting together the budget and bridging that particular gap. Uh, Mrs. Ned Potts over in Grants, um, we appreciate it. So the proposed general fund is balanced. Um, we had a one point six million dollar funding gap and was closed by the following. City attorney reducing the budget in, uh, general fund by four hundred thousand dollars. The water department restoring a four hundred thousand dollar minimum contribution to the liability fund. The city controller identifying approximately four hundred thousand dollars in general fund revenue enhancements. And my reducing about four hundred thousand in citywide general fund expenses and salary and operations and maintenance. All of those things resulted in no staff layoffs proposed for this budget year. Last week, yes, uh, the mayor and council asked for, um, uh, some discussion about the personnel moves and increases and deletions in the budget. So this year, we're adding parking enforcement officers for new positions.
Uh, excuse me, I, I think you may need to come to this mic. It sound like it's, it's kinda hard to follow you on that mic.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Well, wait a minute. So to be comfortable, I know you're not gonna be comfortable.
I'll be fine, I'll be fine.
Why don't you, you don't wanna go stand up?
I'll, I'll be fine. So the, the council is teasing me because I was involved in a car accident a couple of weeks ago and my back's kinda bothering, but I'm okay. Um, okay, so we have, um, we've included, uh, uh, as we discussed last week, we added four new parking enforcement officers. We're gonna try to, uh, cover some seven day week in, uh, evening hours. We've added three new positions in code enforcement. One newly funded in regular code enforcement plus two existing vacancies that we'll fill. Code enforcement administrative assistant, um, that's one new position. And license enforcement, which is business license, those are two new positions totaling to three. Total of ten revenue, um, producing, uh, full-time employees. Uh, and these positions generate revenue that offset their salary. Uh, as requested by the mayor and council last week, we put together, um, a visual on where the positions will be added and deleted. In the fire department, under fire protection specialist, uh, that particular position is vacant. Um, we're gonna delete that position due to loss of funds out of the hazmat account. The accounting specialist, we're transferring that position to general services due to a loss of funds from hazmat. In general services, we're, um, transferring from fire to, uh, the vacancy that we have in general services. So there's no net gain there. We add a vacancy in that position. Building and safety administrative specialist, we're transferring from, uh, building and safety to a vacancy in the water department. Administrative services specialist, uh, that's a transfer from building and safety to the vacancy within the water department. Again, in the water department, we're adding, uh, new, one new position of an administrative services supervisor uh, under the enterprise funding that's available. Operations manager, special projects, uh, that's a new position, enterprise funding available, um, under waste management. And then the administrative assistant position is a new position. Um, and as you recall, we had, uh, the waste enterprises, a very large enterprise that requires full-time management, uh, and right now it's being jumbled by, uh, part of the water department staff. Under the grants department, uh, we have, uh, we're deleting one vacant position, the program development specialist. Uh, we're adding, uh, a more diverse classification skill set needed for the community development, uh, specialist. It's also grant-funded, not on the general fund. Uh, grants office aide is vacant, uh, we're deleting that. And a building inspector two is gonna be transferred, um, to, uh, building and safety. The successor, uh, we're adding administrative assistant to that position and it will be funded under the ROPS. Success, community development specialist, uh, grant-funded, um, that's under successor agency. Uh, HR, uh, human resource analyst, uh, general fund, it's a new position. Um, as you recall, we have, uh, some critical needs in HR department, um, so we're adding those, those positions. This particular position is for benefits, uh, administration, um, and recruitment. Career link, all positions will remain in career link, um, over at seven hundred. Uh, they'll be funded under the Cal VIP, uh, grant as well as the community development block grant funding. Uh, their mission, uh, has been changed to manage the Cal VIP grant as well as, um, a community development block grant program that will, uh, assist seniors. All of the personnel moves will be, uh, uh, met, will meet with the unions and confer with those particular moves uh, in the very near future. The business license division, uh, these are transfers, um, I'm sorry, let me back up here. So these are changes to city departments. Again, we spoke last week about moving business license division to the controller's office. Service the counter, uh, service at the counter will remain the same. Um, we recognize that it's, uh, important for the customers to have a one-stop shop. In fact, we're working on trying to bring, uh, all customer services downstairs to the counter, counter area. City controller will oversee business license, um, and provide supervision, uh, and increase, uh, business license, uh, to help, uh, increase the business license fee collections. So we're adding a supervisor to that. Not adding, but we're actually filling a supervisor position. We're transferring, um, the IT department, reproduction and grants to the city manager's office. Changes to the operations, non-departmental wide, we talked about the cell phone, um, bills being moved over to, uh, non-departmental, phone allowance and utilities over to that non-departmental section. Code enforcement, right now, the, uh, code enforcement manager position is vacant. We are currently recruiting for that position in the, uh, oral interviews. The testing has passed and the oral interviews are coming up on July ninth. Um, we have the fire chief temporarily overseeing that particular department. Thank you, chief. The following slides, uh, we talk about where the general fund money comes from. This is a reiteration of last week's pu- uh, public hearing. Property taxes, uh, totaled approximately four point four million dollars. Sales and other taxes, twenty-four point six million dollars. Interest income, approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Miscellaneous revenue, five hundred and sixty-six thousand. License permits and impact fees, approximately seven point six million dollars. Fines, forfeitures and penalties, one point nine million dollars. Rents and concessions, um, we've increased that, uh, due in large part to our facilities that we've been renting out to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Revenues from other agencies, approximately ten point four million dollars. Charges from current services, six point seven million dollars. Other revenues at forty-five thousand dollars. Measure P of one percent sales tax, ten point eight million dollars totaling sixty-eight, uh, just over sixty-eight million dollars in general fund revenue. This particular diagram is kind of hard to see, particularly if you're sitting in the back. It just breaks down the largest contributors to the, the general fund, uh, to the revenues. And as you can see, utility, uh, user tax, uh, makes up twenty percent of those, uh, revenues. The second highest appears to be the measure P tax. Uh, license permits, impact fees are eleven percent, revenues from other agencies is fifteen percent. Sales and use taxes thirteen percent. When we're asking who the largest sales tax contributors are in the city, uh, the largest contributor group is the service station group. Those are gas stations with convenience stores. Retail stores, um, that have, uh, building materials, retail stores, uh, department store. I see that's listed twice, Rafela, is that, is that an, uh, department store, department store, is that a, is that an error or is that different? Okay. Leasing, three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Wholesale building materials, three hundred and seventeen thousand. Retail stores, department store, again, two eighty-six. Furniture appliance electronic, two hundred and thirty-eight. Apparel stores at two seventeen. Auto parts and repair at dry, and at one ninety-six and dry cleaning at one eighty-three. And I believe some legislation just passed that allowed for internet sales tax to come to the municipalities. I think Councilwoman Sharif, you sent me something on that? Internet sales tax?
Yes.
So we could possibly anticipate, uh, those are unanticipated, uh, funds that, uh, may help us in the future. This is just a pie chart breakdown of what we just discussed. Here are the, uh, summary of the general fund expenditures. This year, we're lowering the mayor and council, um, department budget, uh, to seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. City attorney is, this year is at one point two million. Uh, city treasurer is at, uh, five hundred and fifty-one thousand. City clerk is at nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. And as, uh, she commented last week, that is due to the upcoming election. My particular office is going to three point six million and that is due in large part to the additional departments that are being, uh, put under the city manager's department. This particular budget in HR, this includes, uh, career link. Um, so when we go to the career link, uh, line, you'll see that there's a blank there. But that money for career link will go back into career link. General services is going to, uh, one point eight million dollars because, uh, that's with the loss of IT. Non-departmental is at five point six million. The city controller with business license is now at three point one five million. Code enforcement has increased, uh, a little through the personnel, personnel additions, excuse me, at two point three million. The shares department contract, um, is actually at, uh, eighteen point nine million. Rafela, is that number correct? I think they're actually at twenty-one. Oh, I see, the three point seven, uh, three million is covered by measure P. Okay, got it. Fire department is at, uh, just a little over, uh, twelve, twelve million dollars, almost thirteen million dollars, doing large part to the chief, uh, really fighting for his personnel and the council really asking the chief what he needed and he wasn't shy about that. Building and safety is at, uh, nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, um, because they lost the, uh, business license, uh, department. Community development is at five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Career link, um, is, as we discussed, the hundred and eighteen thousand plus fifty thousand for, uh, the community development block grant money as well as the Cal VIP grant. Parks and Recreation is at two point seven million dollars. So totaling for twenty eighteen nineteen fifty-seven, uh, just over fifty-seven million dollars. As requested, we, um, we're breaking out the, uh, measure P. Even though it's a general fund, we are breaking it out separately and talking about the expenditure of that particular fund. Measure P is a voter-approved district sales tax. The district sales tax has been ruled by the city attorney to be a general resource. Auditories have determined that measure P can be accounted for as general fund revenue. Measure P requires an independent audit. Measure P has an oversight committee and that first meeting is on the twenty-eighth at five PM and that is a public meeting. Measure P, district sales tax, uh, so again, continuing. Bradley Burns is your regular, uh, sales tax revenue and is estimated at nine point two million dollars for this upcoming fiscal year. Measure P, uh, estimated originally be at seven to eight million dollars annually. Revenue for seventeen eighteen, um, is, uh, eight point seven. Uh, and the revenue for next year is estimated at ten point eight million. These are the allocations for next fiscal year. Again, we are allocating approximately thirty-five percent of measure P for law enforcement. Um, ten percent as, uh, we requested last fiscal year and we thank the council for supporting this. Uh, we plan to put together a, um, uh, set aside a ten percent reserve each year to build up a reserve for the city. And our, um, capital improvements, uh, this year for measure P is, uh, dedic- dedicated at fifty-five percent of the measure P money at five point nine million dollars. Um, that includes all your construction, your administration and your engineering, um, and supervision required for the, uh, numerous public works projects that we have going on in the city right now. Capital improvement projects, um, in the upcoming fiscal year include, uh, six hundred and forty thousand dollars in pothole repairs, which was, uh, which was approved by the council recently. Sidewalk, sidewalk repairs and reconstruction, that's five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Entry medians and monuments, um, uh, and the, uh, the mine, the MLK Chavez monument, that's six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. The city hall parking expansion is approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and that involves, uh, removal of the turf near the, um, heritage house and utilizing that space for parking. South Park, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Burrell McDonald Park, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The traffic camera, uh, replacement citywide and it's not just traffic cameras, the cameras all over, uh, for the council's, um, edification, it's parks and the, uh, cameras along Long Beach Boulevard and throughout the city. City facility repairs, uh, there are a number of, uh, HVACs that are, are in need of replacement and some roofing over at, uh, Burrell McDonald, um, and then some beautification that we plan. And then the street sign project this year is approximately fifty thousand dollars. So the subtotal for the capital improvement projects, uh, for this year is, uh, just over four million dollars. Other capital improvement projects, um, and the sources of the, uh, the funding. Chavez Park, a hundred thousand dollars from community development block grant. Central Avenue, uh, Proposition C funds, two million dollars. Wilmington Avenue, Proposition C. Compton Boulevard East, um, highway safety improvement and Prop C, four million. Compton Boulevard West, these are, uh, Compton Boulevard from border to border. Five million from, uh, highway safety improvement and Prop C. Street improvements on residential from community development block grant and section one oh eight. Um, SB one funds, approximately four point two million dollars. Traffic signals and lighting, lighting and landscape, uh, which we just went over tonight, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, sewer improvements, uh, under the sewer capital improvement, eight hundred thousand dollars. And water improvements of three hundred, oh, I'm sorry, three million dollars totaling twenty-one, uh, point three million. Under public works, street repair, staff and materials, uh, we're setting aside approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Engineering design, uh, and, uh, the NPDS, which is the National Pollution, Pollutant Discharge, um, services that we have to comply with, with the Clean Water Act, approximately three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Code enforcement, uh, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, graffiti removal contract, uh, two hundred thousand dollars in liability insurance premium at seven hundred and forty thousand. The total measure P capital improvement, uh, budget is at five point nine million dollars. This is the sum of the, uh, measure P expenses. We just went over those particular numbers and it totals, uh, ten point, uh, eight million dollars that we anticipate for this fiscal year coming up. This slide is just a bar chart of the, uh, expense summary that we just went over. Kind of provides a visual. And you guys requested a, um, capital improvement plan so that we could integrate our capital improvements, uh, with the five-year CIP. Um, this particular budget, uh, year, we're going to, uh, meet quarterly to make budget decisions. And the capital improvement plan for over the next five years is, um, fairly complex. We didn't want to rush it in one week, so we'll bring back, uh, an adoption for the five-year measure P plan in September, um, this year. Or sooner if you wish, but we, we're planning for September of this year. And that concludes our presentation and we will entertain comments.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Hold the lights. We'll now proceed forward and open the floor to public comments specifically on the presented general fund budget for the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Are there members of the public that wish to comment?
Now, do we have to pay for ambulance to come and pick us up? Since you did the budget?
The question is, do we pay for ambulance service?
Yeah, do, like, if I call the ambulance for you and they gonna charge it to my phone, right?
There's, uh, ambulance services contracted, yes. And then normally also if I have insurance, they'll bill my insurance, uh, for acute life support or basic life support.
Yeah, but if I'm laying on the roadside, ambulance gonna pass me up because I can't afford that ride?
I'm sorry, Mr. Arons, can you?
Uh, the ambulance gonna pass me up because I cannot afford that ride?
No, they are required to pick you up, sir.
Oh, okay, thanks. Because that's what happened to Charles Drew, the blood plasma guy, they denied him, uh, ma- uh, medical assistance. Did you know that? Charles Drew is a guy that designed blood plasma. He was a black man and they, uh, wouldn't give him medical assistance because he was black. True story.
Thank you. Are there any other members, yes, sir?
First off, during the hearing, it was said that annually you pay four hundred thousand dollars for lighting and landscaping. But on this budget you have, and you've even said it during your presentation, City Manager, two hundred thousand. Or is that all included with the four hundred thousand? Because it said graffiti and everything else was included. But that's okay. I want to go back and ask if your item number seventeen is also included in the balance at seven hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars that you have to pay to the controller. Is that included in this budget coming up? Because you don't have any money, the city doesn't have any money to pay this now. Or are you waiting to get a trans? What, in the next couple of months? I see here on the budget where the mayor and council has decreased, uh, fifty-two thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars. Does that mean they, uh, got rid of one liaison? I tell you, you can have two, over two hundred twenty more thousand if you got rid of all them, just had one. Also, I see where, on the city manager, you've increased yours by, uh, one million, nine hundred thirty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars. And maybe later you'll explain why that is. General services has decreased, general services, two million, one hundred seventy thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars. Am I correct? Because I'm taking last year's and this year's figures and, and using just common math, common arithmetic. And was city clerk, yours increased four hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred nine dollars. Is that for an election year? Thank you, see, I'm not so stupid. But really, please, you know what? This is a fake budget, it doesn't balance again.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Yes, sir.
Honorable Mayor and City Council. Okay, uh-
Could you state your name for the record, sir?
Oh, Anthony Muhammad.
Thank you.
Okay. I did see some discrepancies on the budget. I see that we received or are estimated to receive revenues, uh, up to eight point seven million dollars from the CIP. And this is, uh, this is for the repair of the streets, the measure P.
Measure P is a general fund that funds a number of things. In particular, uh, we're focusing on public works projects, yes.
Okay. Uh, but I also see a four hundred thousand dollar decrease in the, uh, funds for community development? There's a four hundred thousand dollar decrease in, uh, community development funds?
In the community development fund?
For commu-, uh, funds to, for community development. Uh, also seeing-
If we can just address, um, each item for, so there's a community development block grant funding, fund that's actually federal funded. And so we receive our appropriations on an annual basis from the federal government. We do not dictate what those revenues will be. They're identified by the federal government and each city gets a certain allotment and every single year that allotment shrinks. And that's just historic.
Okay. Now, there was, uh, eleven million dollars from a fund, or from a, uh, a HUD grant, uh, from two thousand and eight. And that was, I, I guess we wanted, you wanted to put that in with the CIP projects?
Is that the section one oh eight?
Yes.
Grant, okay, so part of the, uh, there's a, um, a legal, a legality that allows us to apply for the use of the, uh, one oh eight funds to help us offset some of our public works projects? So write a, write a letter to the federal government, list out your projects and then you specify the streets?
Well, it looks like the, uh, measure P projects are self-funded, uh, with estimated revenues up to eight million dollars. I don't understand why we have to cut, uh, community development. Uh, also, is there any actions being taken to be self-sufficient with these repairs? Uh, the city of Compton, are we going to, uh, give this money to the county or other contractors outside of this city to do the work that our city should be doing? Are, are we?
Sir, your, your time is up. Um, I'm going to request that, um, we, we're on a timed public comment and I gave you an additional time. Uh, you'll have another opportunity to speak during public comments in which we can bring you up. So if you want to either write your comments out-
Okay. I hope I wasn't saying something that was ruffling your feathers.
Absolutely not. You, your, your understanding was actually, um, not there, but we wanted to be able to clarify.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor?
I'd like to give knowledge so that people are not misinformed.
Madam Mayor? Could the city manager just go with that community? Because I think what he's talking about is where it's listed, where it's the four hundred thousand dollars. If he could just do briefly, tell him please, the decrease, why have decreased that four hundred thousand dollars? I think that's what he was talking about.
Because I'm, I'm really confused, thank you. That clarification would be helpful.
So is that, uh, so you know successor agency, uh, was at one time part of the community development department? Um, and we're also eliminating a, uh, planning, uh, director out of that particular department. Uh, so full salary employee benefits are coming out of that.
And then also the budget, we have to understand the way that is presented. These are projections of how we're spending money. There's separate revenue and then there's also projections as to how the city will be spent, spending its revenue sources. And we have several different revenue sources. So if you pick up your budget book, um, in the back or grab one from the city clerk, in total, we have a combined budget of a hundred and eighty-five million dollars, which includes enterprise funds, sewer, water, general fund, um, which includes measure P. There's also HUD funding, CDPG. So there's a variety of different sources that comprise our actual budget. And so what was presented on this evening was a projection of how the city will be expending these funds. And then also, we compared it to the expenditures from last fiscal year and this fiscal year. So we do not dictate the amount of revenue that we receive from really any of the sources, um, special revenue sources, they're dictated, um, by a variety of different ways. So from federal government, they provide cities with their appropriation. Um, our sewer funding is, is based on a variety of factors. We, our landscape and lighting, we just had one of our public, um, hearings on that. Um, there's different combinations of sources of revenues. And so what is projected is based off of what we actually receive and then we can actually budget them out. So I don't want people to think that we're cutting funding from different funds. No, we're using the funding that we have that are dictated by a variety of different factors. So hopefully that provides some clarity. Yes, sir.
Rodney Lister again. A quick question, uh, regarding, what the gentleman spoke about earlier regarding the section one oh eight funds and going to what you mentioned for our CDPG funds. Aren't the section one oh eight funds, CBG funds that the city council probably two, three years ago went to HUD for and pretty much asked to have future allocation awarded back then so you could do the CIP projects? Because I get a little confused on that because the thing is that each year you get, a- as you said, it fluctuates how much money you get from the federal government for block grant funds. But part of your allocation is already obligated through the section one oh eight. So I came here last week and it's my fault I didn't go to the city clerk to ask to see the original section one oh eight, uh, document. So I, I can go ahead and see that. Because I think sometimes what happens, the confusion that we, and we as a citizen don't understand about prior obligations that you may not have any control of. But I know if we can see it, then we, we can get a better idea and maybe ask better questions as far as what's being used currently out of new money to fund projects and what's being used out of old money that you already got permission to spend, to spend, uh, spend for. My other question is, my last question, is those, uh, measure P funds, are those discretionary funds or non-discretionary funds? Like when you get the money in, are you obligated by a certain criteria that you have to use it for certain things? Or is that a discretion of the council as far as what you set as priorities that particular year?
Um, I'll, I'll, actually, I'll go after you if you don't mind. Um, yeah, go ahead.
So just to, so the audience understands the clarification of community development block grant funds, section one oh eight funds. Whenever we want to, uh, bring forth a change in those funds, we bring a substantial amendment to the council. Um, and then we ask the federal government to ask for a substantial change or a substantial amendment to those, um, to change the use of those funds. Some of those funds that we've, uh, received over the years, uh, must be spent down. You have to spend down a, a certain percentage by a certain time. We're trying to catch up with those expenditures because we fell behind a little bit, uh, due to staffing shortages and some other issues. So we actually must expend those funds. Um, and then if you want to answer the measure P question?
Um, absolutely, absolutely. Measure P is a general tax to the general fund. Um, but the voters approve measure P based on a specific criteria. And so the council is charged with appropriating those funds based on the specific criteria. And there is a oversight committee that also oversees those expenditures to ensure that we're spending funding based on that criteria. And so we purposely separated the expenditures for transparency and clarity so that people can see how measure P is being used, the percentages, um, for law enforcement, for public works. A big concern for, um, people passing measure P was, um, capital improvement, which are our, our infrastructure funds, also safety, um, and then also a reserve. And so we made sure that we have percentages for those expenditures so that you can actually see how measure P is being used. We also included the estimated revenue, the actual revenue, and then the projected revenue for the next fiscal year. And also included in the presentation, which was requested, um, by us two weeks ago, was to include a five-year spending plan of measure P so that people can clearly see how these funds will be used over the next five years. And we all can be in agreement as to the percentages for streets, roads, lightings, all the things, um, park improvements, all the things that citizens voted on measure P for. So this is to, and address one portion of what the, um, gentleman just talked about. When you're talking about prior year appropriations, this will give us an opportunity to clearly see that based on what the measure P revenue is, what the projections will be for the next five years and how those funds will be spent so that we'll all be clear as to how these funds will be used. You'll be able to see the amount in each fiscal year. And so that'll be in one document and that can be clear. So his question regarding the section one oh eight funds, a great one, because we can't go, this budget looks at this specific budget year. But section one oh eight is comprised, it's a fund that has been in existence for over ten years. And so we are now trying to appropriate those funds. And as the city manager clearly stated, we have to get approval from HUD in order to utilize these funds in this specific manner. And so that is what you see on tonight.
Question. Um, Ms. Kelly, um, asked the question about the repayment of the money to the state. That is going to come out of this current fiscal year, Ms. Kelly. Um, and we, um, we're not broke. We do have the money to pay for it. We set that money aside and so we plan, we plan for it.
Thank you. Um, maybe have a motion to close the public hearing and we'll proceed forward to additional comments from the council. Feel free. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Limbo, I have a question in regards to the grants, uh, department. Will, okay, all these people that you're adding, will any of the persons that you're adding, will any of them be able to write a grant, actually write a grant? The other, under the, uh, the department changes for the successor, the career link. Um, I see there's nothing that's going to be given to the career link. But maybe it's just me, but I thought in reading for that deed, for the, the building, that when we were given that building from Edison, that we were given that building because someone had to be there to administer, uh, a career link, um, within that building. But maybe that's just me. But I, I do question that. And moving on into your department, I know the additional money is because of, um, other departments for the city manager that will be added to your position, I mean, added to your office. But I question because when the state controller actually conducted the audit, because of a city of our size, you have too many, uh, city managers, assistant city managers. So I'm wondering if you plan on removing one of those city managers or if you plan on continuing to have those additional officers? Because that's money that could be saved within the city. Because it seems like you get nothing done and you have these two officers. Each time someone asks you for something up here, it's nothing that's ever resolved. Uh, and as far as the HR department, I know there seems to be an issue with the HR representative. When will that be resolved instead of continuing to bring someone in, which is causing the city more money? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. May we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Someone?
Roll call?
Council persons, Rita?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. Council comments?
Um, yeah, I had a couple of comments.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just, just briefly, not really much, like, comments, but just comments. Based on the comments that- Based on the comments that was made. The, uh, the mayor stated that the Oversight Committee was to oversee and make sure that the money was being spent properly for Measure P. But from my understanding, the Oversight Committee was, didn't have any input on how the, the money was being spent. They would just be, have a report on how the money was spent. Um, I don't know who wants to answer that, City Manager or City Attorney, for clarification.
If, uh, Madam Mayor, um, Counselperson, if you can go to your other questions, I can actually look up the document and read straight from the document.
Okay.
For the purpose.
And then, uh, Madam City Controller.
Oh, sure, you can do that now if you want to.
Okay, in terms of overseeing, the point of a oversight body comprised of citizens is for them to report out to other citizens. And so overseeing exactly the expenditures, we're all citizens of Compton, all of us. And so they are to oversee the expenditures and ensure that the expenditures are spent as accordance to Measure P, what was identified. And if it is not, it's up to the citizen body to sound the alarm, to bring it to the attention of the city and be able to proceed forward from there. That's, that's what an oversight body does. We have Oversight Commissioners that oversee. And while they do not have police power, they do have a, a position of authority and responsibility that are given to them being a Commissioner. And so in my opinion, that is the same with the Oversight Committee.
Okay, and then secondly, um, Madam City Controller, um, if you can come to the podium. Good, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. If you, if you know, um, the projections that were given for Measure P, um, several years ago, when it was going to be first established, when we didn't have any history on what it would generate, do you know how close it is to the projections that were projected three or four years ago?
My understanding is that it was seven to eight million that was projected when the, when you were going through the whole process of getting it. Um, this year, we've, we're coming in more than the projections. So this year, we're coming in about 8.7 million and we're projected to come in next year about 10.8.
So it's right around the projections that were made?
It's more.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any additional council comments?
Yes, Mayor Brown. Uh, I'm looking at the Measure P CIP projects and I know that they're looking at the City Hall expansion. And I'm just wondering if there would be any upgrades or anything there for the Heritage House? Or, uh, what had your, what is your, um, what are your plans for that?
Um, Mayor Council, for the Heritage House, uh, we've had a couple of discussions about that. Um, it is, it currently occupies a space that's being reviewed for, um, additional parking. Um, we're not going to move the house at this point. Um, there have been some discussions. And if that item comes where we're going to move the house or maybe do something different with that particular location, I know that for the Historical Society and for, um, longtime residents of the city, it's an important, uh, historical site. Um, we'll bring that to the council body and let you decide, um, on that. Uh, I know there's a Historical Committee out there. Um, but we are reviewing, um, the option of leaving the house intact and putting, uh, parking in front where the turf is. Because it's a fairly large, uh, piece of land in front of the Heritage House and we need the, the parking, uh, along with, uh, getting the letter over to the library to bring, uh, some additional parking for the council meetings and for other things that happen here at City Hall.
The, the only thing is, I have spoken with you about this before and I'm just wondering if you're going to do any upgrades there to the house? Because in looking at it, I had a walkthrough and it does need to be somewhat, it needs to be maintained. And I'm just wondering if you plan to do anything, uh, as far as that is concerned? Because that is, um, one of the, um, historical sites here for the city. And that's what I'm, but that's what I was concerned about. And hopefully you would not consider moving it. Because if so, I'm wondering where would you move it to?
Um, so to answer both questions, um, we will take a look at that. We're going to be doing the budget, uh, quarterly. Uh, and we're really closely watching revenues as they come in, uh, and expenditures go out. If we have any money we can identify, the first thing will be an assessment of what needs to be done in the Heritage House. Um, what types of things, you know, how much work? And then we look at the scope of work, then we can bring something to the body to, um, discuss.
Yes.
And if we do move it, we might consider, um, one location, there's seven acres at, uh, the site that Ms. Boone talked about.
What site is that?
The 700, uh, South Bullis Avenue. There's seven acres at that site.
At the Career Link?
At Career Link, yes. That's a seven acre lot.
You're going to move the Heritage, thinking in terms of moving Heritage House to the Career Link?
No, I said that's an option that we'll, we'll bring to the council to consider.
Okay. Uh, the, my other question is that you, uh, you were, uh, when looking at the other projects, the, uh, wow. The CDBG grant, I had asked about this before. And I was asking about the funding, so how much funding did we receive for 2018? And also, I know that there was some money that was left back from 2013. And I'm wondering, uh, because at the last City Council, Council meeting, we approved $1.7 million to come from other funds in order to take care of some of the, uh, the streets that was not done under the 2018 projects. My question now is that funding that's there, the monies that's there, have we been able to get approval to use those funds as of yet? Under the CDBG?
Under the, the seat, the current CDBG or the, the money that were coming?
2013, I'm looking at all of it, 2013, the current funds and everything. I, I think it's supposed to be two point, well, two million dollars.
So the 2013 money, uh, for those particular street projects, um, we asked for, uh, them to allow us to use that money because we have to spend it up.
Right.
Um, and then the, the current money that we're, um, budgeting, I'm not exactly sure exactly how much we got in. I don't know, Controller, do you have those numbers, uh, on the exact?
Miss, you don't have it?
Yeah.
You don't have it back, that far back? Do you have any idea what we received for this, for 2018? Yes?
2013 is a little, I'm not exactly sure how much we have from that far back.
So for 2013, what we've received, I'm sorry, 2018, what we've received as of June, um, 21st is 898,471. And, um,
Eight hundred ninety.
Eight hundred ninety-eight thousand, four seventy-one. And some of those are, um, we have to actually ask for reimbursement. So this is what we've received to date. So there are still some funds out there that we've expended that we're still waiting to, um, to receive.
Okay. Uh, my question is this, is that if we, have we received, again, have we received permission to use those funds from 2013 and the current funding? Have we received, uh, um, a permission from HUD to use those funds?
My understanding is that the Grants, um, Department is working with HUD to do a, the substantial amendment. So I'm not sure if they've actually heard back to exactly what we can use it for yet, but, um, maybe.
Ms. Annette Potts is our Grant, um, and she's managing our,
Okay.
Our, she's going to come up and talk about that.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, the funds that you're speaking on 2013, I know that, excuse me, former staff did a substantial amendment to use those funds for street improvements. But we since determined that those funds weren't eligible for street improvements?
They're not eligible?
No. Because when they did the original amendment, it was for CDBG and not CDBG 108. So they did a CDBG amendment and they should have done, done a Section 108 amendment. So we've since requested that HUD approve the, the Section 108 and give us the, the authority to make that change. And in the meantime, we've rescinded the money that was going to be available through 2013 and the street improvements are being, uh, implemented with, I'm looking for a window. Is that Measure P?
Measure P money.
It just came to council about a month ago.
As a matter of fact,
Gas tax.
Gas tax money.
Okay.
Yep.
So we still have that money available and we're waiting for HUD to give us approval. And that's a part of the CDBG Section 108 money that's in the budget that we're proposing for street improvements. Um, and I believe the amount is about 4.3 million. So that's going to be included in that, that amount. And I think it's listed in the street improvements.
So we have 4.3 million, for, i- i- in case they allow, if they allow us to use that money, we have 4.3 million dollars to use for the streets?
Yes.
Okay.
And that includes that section, uh, that, uh, 2013 amount that you're referring to.
Okay.
But it's all going to come before council, before once HUD tells us to move forward, then we will present it to council for approval.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
I believe I signed those documents this morning, right?
Yeah, the letter that we sent to HUD, yes.
Okay, so the next question, Mr. City Manager, thank you so much.
Your pleasure.
Is that when those funds come in, I'm, I'm concerned, my interest is where will those funds be spent? Uh, will you, have you guys been able to identify any streets or anything as of yet? And what areas those, those funds will be spent?
First, they've got to be approved.
When the funds come in, we have to re, look at the revised map. Um, and then we'll take a look at, because you can only spend the money in CDBG-approved areas.
That's right.
So once those, uh, funds get approved, then we will put together a staff report uh, based upon the current maps that are supplied by the federal government and, um, and also using our street management plan based upon the severity and, and condition of those particular streets. We'll bring those to you for approval before we actually spend the money.
So you already have the maps, right?
Ms. Potts, have the maps come in yet? I haven't seen the, the latest map. They haven't come in yet?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to turn to Career Link. So I see we have some grants listed here. And can you give me, can you explain this Cal VIP grant?
So the Cal VIP grant is a approximately half million dollars, um, grant. Four hundred thousand will go to Volunteers of America to administer the program and to handle the program. And a hundred thousand is going to the city, um, for administrative costs. Goals is to provide 300 at-risk transition age youth, 18 to 25.
Wait a minute, back up. You said how much is going to Volunteer Students of America?
Four hundred thousand.
And how much is the grant?
Five hundred thousand.
So then the grant is not sustaining, um, the Career Link?
The, the hundred thousand dollars of administrative costs will sustain Career Link.
A hundred thousand dollars? That's all they need?
Plus the fifty thousand that we're using, um, to, uh, on CDBG for them to provide services for the senior program that they have to do. And I'll go over these programs, uh, now, if, if you like.
Yeah, I would like for you to, because if, even if you have the grant funding, some of the funding has to go towards the program and not just salaries, correct?
Correct, that's why the four hundred thousand is going to Volunteers of America.
For programming. Okay. And then, so, so how much general fund will be supplemented for Career Link?
Um, we're not using any general fund money for that.
For, for Career Link at all?
They're being, uh, repurposed, uh, and, and for this particular, this program in the Community Development Block Grant Program for seniors.
And what program is that?
That is a, uh, Compton Senior Citizens Program. Um, it's a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar program in-house. Uh, offers a variety of programs and supportive services for the seniors. They're going to teach them how to do community, uh, computer work, uh, as well as operate their, uh, electronic devices and equipment and provide other activities and workshops for the seniors, um, that are enhanced.
So these are the programs that are at Dollar High Center? Are these to be in addition to?
This will be in addition to.
Okay.
Because there are computers over at Career Link also. And they're not going to move from Career Link either.
Okay, well, congratulations to Career Link. I'm glad to see that they found some funding that's not from the general fund. So what I'm going to request at this time is, so that we can a, avoid all the conversation that we've had for the past eight years that I've been on this council. I'm going to ask that we bring back the proper items for agenda, either resolution or ordinance, whatever it, it may be, that once there's no grant funding for Career Link, that the department dissolves. And then, I'd like to, um, ask about the Successor Agency. So we still have a Successor Agency going on in our next budget?
Yes, we still have, uh, we still have the ROPS that we have. We still have properties, Successor Agency properties that have to be disposed of. There are a number of, um, administrative tasks that are required for disposal of these properties. So yes, we still have a Successor Agency. Um, and we still have, uh, I believe 22 or 23 Successor Agency properties still remaining.
So you don't think it would be more cost-effective to, um, I mean, so our ROPS are done outside, correct? By a consultant? Or are they done in-house now?
Well, the Successor, the Successor Agency staff puts together the ROPS. There are all the administrative services, all the things that are, are paid for out of the Successor Agency. Admin services, cleaning the, the sites, things like that.
Okay, because I have, once, once upon a time, the ROPS were being done by a consultant. They, they weren't done in-house. Um, and then my other question about Successor Agency is, from what I understand, all the property will be overseen, or you can explain it to me. The property will be overseen by the county. So are we still required to have a department?
So what happens in the near future, Council Lady and Mayor Council and for the audience, um, whenever we, let's say we get a proposal to buy, for someone to buy a piece of Successor Agency property, we take that proposal in, they have to pay the current, um, appraised value. Um, that sale has to be approved by that body. Um, so we may say, yes, it's a two million dollar piece of property, but we still have to submit that for approval to that particular body that you're discussing, uh, which is an oversight body that is going to revert to the County of Los Angeles very shortly. So their responsi, our responsibility doesn't change. The responsibility of that body only shifts from one group to another.
So will we still have appointees on that body?
Those county appointees, um, no, they'll be going from, the county will be controlling it.
So they'll, because there'll be no more school district appointee or college appointee? Okay, and then, um, I have one other question, just so when I'm asked, so that I understand. Um, I wasn't here last couple of weeks, if y'all missed me. I missed y'all. The, um, the Clerk's office. So we're adding a Deputy Chief, what, wait a minute, let me get it right. You can help me, Madam Clerk, if you'd like.
Deputy City Clerk, no Chief.
A Deputy City Clerk. So why, why do we feel the need for that?
We're eliminating one position and adding a Deputy Chief, um,
No, no Chief, just a Deputy.
A Deputy Clerk, I'm sorry. Um, in the absence of, uh, the Chief Deputy and the Clerk herself, um, there is no one left in the office to, um, conduct clerk business. Uh, so that's what this position is for. Uh, right now, the current staffing configuration doesn't allow for those kinds of vacancies. And from time to time, those vacancies do occur. And it's really so we can continue to conduct city business, um, with the appropriate staffing level. So we're going to reduce, uh, one position and, uh, bring in another.
So Madam City Clerk, how often are you and the Deputy Clerk out of the office at the same time?
Um, I can't put a number on it, but it does happen. Um, case in point, um, yesterday, my chief was out. Um, and I was in a meeting, we needed someone to be, to take the oath.
We needed someone to be, to take the oath. Neither one of us was there, so the person couldn't take the oath. There's been times where, um, uh, both of us, I could be at a conference, I could be in a meeting, I could have not arrived at the office, she could be on vacation. Occasionally, it happens. However, it could at some point happen at a critical moment when document, legal documents need to be signed, and we're both out of the office. So it's, every day is a different day, so at any given point, it could happen. And depending on when it happens, it could, um, it could hurt us at that point. So, um, I talk with the city manager, and I feel that there's a need for another line of supervision in my, in management in my office, because the current two staffs cannot stand in for myself, um, as the city clerk. So if at any point that I'm out, as well as my chief is out, um, then nothing can be signed.
So you and the chief have a special, I mean, so the city manager can't sign what you sign?
No.
No?
No. City manager cannot sign as the clerk. He signs his documents as the manager, and I sign documents as the clerk, so he couldn't. And in fact, I attest to him, and so he couldn't attest to himself. And also what it does too is, if, if my chief is out, then, then I'm strained to sit in the office all day and just sit there, and I can't do anything else, I can't go to lunch, I can't, because I don't want to be out. So it's really a strain on me, because I can't do anything else other than sit in the office if my deputy is on vacation or out sick, or whatever the case may be, um, to keep, you know, the office flowing, so.
So if we bring in a, um, a deputy city clerk, uh, so then you have a chief and a deputy, will you still need the election consultants that you get, uh, that we get through you?
Yes, because my, my office is very small, and, um, it's, it's, it's a lot of work putting on in election. There's a lot of avenues, a lot of things that have to be covered. And, um, the charter just allows me to bring in assistance if I need it. So I do bring in assistance, uh, from different areas to do my training, to, um, to consult with poll workers, to, to find my poll workers. So there's, there's a lot of avenues of putting an election together, and just two of us can't do it.
So now it'll be three of you?
It will be three of us.
If this is fair.
And, and, and if truth be told, I didn't have a consultant on this, this, um, last election, which was our special. So really, it was kind of.
You didn't?
I didn't.
Seems like I see her around here all the time.
She transcribes the minutes, but she didn't do the election.
Oh, okay. All right, so that explains that.
Counsel, I'd like to make one clarification. I just, um, communicated with staff. So on Career Link, there's, there actually is some general fund money used to get Bridget Gabb. It's about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. A hundred of that is partly for the salaries, and then twenty-four thousand is for their O and M operations and maintenance. So that is a clarification, so.
So that's quite a bit of money. So did we think about, uh, well, I shouldn't say we, because I'm not on the budget team, but did you think about, uh, cutting the staff so that it could be fully funded by the grants?
Again, Mayor Council, we, uh, made an effort to look at where we, to cut the staff for the hundred thousand. It would have not allowed the staff to have been able to manage the grants and do the programs that we needed. So either, e- either we do the grant and we do the project, the programs, or we couldn't. If we cut the staff, there wouldn't be enough staff to actually do the programs.
But I thought you said, um, and I'm done with it. I thought you said Volunteers of America was doing the programs.
So our role in this is to do the reporting. Uh, Volunteer, Volunteers of America does the lion's share of the work, but we also have grant administration responsibilities, uh, reporting to the state, uh, on the progress of the grant. So that's what all of that's for.
Okay, well, I still stand where I stand, where I like to see something come back, that, that, that department be grant-funded.
In its entirety, correct?
Right, and, and if not, then it needs to dissolve.
Any additional council comments?
Madam Mayor, I just had one clarification. When you were talking about the successor agency, is any general fund money used for successor agency personnel?
The successor agency fund is, uh, covers all the personnel in the successor agency.
Okay, thank you.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
And it has to do with the commissioners, because I know in the, um, we discussed, uh, the commissioners being pretty much dissolved, except for the four that's in the charter. And I did have a question about F-GAB, is that if, uh, how would you plan to, um, who would be, where would those responsibilities go? Who would be responsible for doing the work that the F-GAB commi, uh, commissioners are doing right now?
There's several options. We have, uh, in other cities they use like Parks and Rec. And what the F-GAB committee actually does for the, um, audiences, they look at the community-based organizations that get a small portion of community development block grant money, um, appropriated out to them, and then that, that, those recommendations come to the council. You don't actually have to have an F-GAB board to do that. So you can have, we can have, one of the, uh, the Parks and Rec Commission can do that.
Have you spoken to anyone by doing?
I'm sorry?
Have you spoken to anyone in regard to them picking it up that, I, the only reason why I'm asking is that I know that when that money come in, we have a lot of nonprofits that they really are depending on those funds. And I just would hate to see that fall by the wayside, because I know, because of them being small nonprofits, they really do, uh, rely on some of those funds.
We, uh, we can certainly approach them, but I, you know, the, the statutory Parks and Rec Commission is, is by charter. And, um, I'm not so sure that they would decline that, but I will let you know if they do.
Okay.
And if they do, we can bring that back to, to the body.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. First, a comment. Councilperson Zarita, you asked, uh, about the Measure P Committee. I wanted to read, uh, right from ordinance number two-two-six-nine. It's called the Compton Taxpayers Committee, and it's established as an oversight board to re, to review the expenditure or revenues collected pursuant to the Measure P tax. And it was adopted, uh, June seventh, 2016, uh, which, so they are an oversight, which is different from a policy-setting, uh, committee. So they'll review what council and management, um, um, adopt regarding Measure P, but, um, they will not be able to set policy within that committee. I had a question.
Before you move to your next, um, topic. So for clarification, what you just said was, the only function that they serve is to review, not to input on how the money is spent.
Not to dictate, I would say. Review, not dictate.
And they have no input on how the money is spent? They don't direct the council on how to spend the money?
They don't direct.
Thank you.
I had a, uh, couple of questions. One from my understanding. In the liability fund, there are two sources. There's sixty-four hundred is a, um, is our liability fund, and we also have a Measure P source. The money that was deducted to help balance, could that be from the Measure P fund? Or does it help balance when it comes from the sixty-four hundred liability fund?
I'll defer to the controller on that particular issue.
And I probably didn't say it, uh, in controller language. The liability fund is derived of two sources. The sixty-four hundred fund and a Measure P contribution. The recent deduction came from the sixty-four hundred side, not the Measure P side. If it, if it was deducted from the Measure P side, would that balance the, the budget just as well?
No, because you still have to remember that Measure P is still general fund. Measure P is still general fund, so it would still have the same effect.
It would have the same effect?
It would have the same effect.
So maybe you want to deduct on the Measure P side and then repurpose it for?
No, 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 no. What I mean is, because sixty-four hundred is an actual fund, as opposed to the, uh, Measure P, which is, is separate, but it's still a part of the general fund. So that deficit would still be there, that gap would still be there without that four hundred from the sixty-four hundred.
Oh, it has to come from sixty-four. Thank you.
So, um, um, we put our Measure P money right in the general fund. It's not, it's not kept separate?
It is kept separate, so that you can readily identify it. So our general fund is one oh, one zero zero one, and then our, our Measure P is one zero zero four, so that you can actually, if you pull up a report, pull up one zero zero four, and it's all Measure P activity. So it is kept separate, but once you goes to, because it is still a general, um, general fund revenue source, once we go to putting the CAFRA together, the financial statements that are audited, they will be combined. So you won't be able to see that in, uh, financial statements, but, um, the way that we keep the records here, so that you can see, we can always pull up a report that's specifically for Measure P.
Thank you.
Then I have a question on code enforcement. The position that is, uh, being recruited, is my understanding it's a midline, uh, management position. Is that person still reporting to the city manager's office?
That person will report to an assistant city manager.
So it, it's in your department?
Yes, yes.
And the, uh, housekeeping matter. I think in my, my personnel section, I, I have a translation stipend that I think is overlooked. I think it's fifteen hundred.
Okay, we'll note that in the back, translation stipend, okay?
Thanks.
And Mr. City Manager, I'm just, I want to request that the PowerPoint presentation that you presented on tonight, I appreciate how the Measure P funds are separated, um, for allocation purposes. But if you could also include, since Measure P is still a part of the general fund and the budget, for instance, when we look at the summary of general fund expenditures, and if we just look at the Los Angeles County Sheriff's expenditure for 2018, 2019, the total says eighteen point nine, but the overall total is really twenty-two million. So if we can just amend the PowerPoint to be reflective of the budget, so that when people are looking at the PowerPoint, they can follow along to the budget, so that we don't have confusion as to what the total number is. So a column for, a total column for all of the items that we detail. Please. Thank you. And then, Mr. City Treasurer, we, I have just one question on the interest income for the revenues that we receive. See it here, projected at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Are we able, or are you willing to do a comparative analysis in terms of what other cities are receiving on a percentage basis of their total funds that are being held in a lending institution?
Well, you're trying to compare apples and apples. You have to understand that the Federal Reserve sets the rates.
I understand the rate.
We've been at one percent for almost eight or nine years. Actually, it's been less than that, but, uh, uh, actually, it's been under one percent. We're just starting to, this past year, had a couple of increases by the Federal Reserve, so we'll probably start seeing a little bit more, uh, projection of, of interest revenue, but it's still below two and a half percent.
I understand the, the rate is set by the federal government, but specifically, um, maybe I, maybe my question wasn't posed properly. I know we receive interest income on the funds that are held in the lending institution, but I know that there are other cities that work with their institutions to establish, for instance, small business loan funds, um, as a community benefit and a return on the city's investment for holding their funding in a financial institution. Because we receive a certain amount of interest, and they do too. And so are we able to, or are you willing to issue an RFP or an RFQ, just to see what is competitive? I know we've been with the same lending institution for many years, but I'm just wondering what's currently on the market in terms of holding our assets.
Well, the majority of our money is held in late right now, because we have, they're more liquid. A lot of that is determined by, uh, what is the cash need of the city. And there are state laws that are have, that, that are certain type of investments that municipalities are allowed to do according to what the state law is. So I'm not so sure about those aspects of loaning taxpayer money out to small business. That's not something that I would get involved in. But, uh, you would probably need to check with the city attorney on how to loan out public money. That wouldn't be any of my privilege to do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you mind, um, doing a, just kind of a, maybe a request for qualifications or proposals, so that we can see what benefits, um, are available to cities? Better interest rate, as well as other competitive services and tools? Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
We're at consent agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion unless a council member requests.
Okay, okay, okay.
Oh, we didn't have public, so sorry. We had so many, um, public hearings that we oversaw. It was by mistake. We will now proceed forward to, um, public comments on agenda and non-agenda matters. Mr. David Irons?
David Irons, Anti-Gentrification and Anti-Rezoning Committee. I wish the city, well, I'm gonna say, I appeal to the city. I'm not going to demand the city, there's a difference. When you demand something, you like, but when you appeal, it's like pleading with the city. Don't tear down the Bow, uh, bowling alley. When I first moved to Compton, I mean, I was a baby, actually five days old, but we had a drive-in theater, we had a downtown that looked like downtown, and y'all just, people coming in the city and tear the place up. I don't know if you get, uh, like the bond thing. My taxes went up, my property taxes went up on that bond. Did Torrance's property taxes go up? I'm try, I'm trying to, because we didn't, um, we bought Compton College back with that bond, three hundred and fifty million dollars, and it put, my property taxes went up. So we bought something back that, and they say we got our, uh, accreditation back. We bought the accreditation. We bought the accreditation back. Three hundred and fifty million dollars? Yeah, they gonna give us as soon as that check. And the, and the way it was written on the, uh, ballot, it said Compton College. It didn't mention nothing about El Camino College. I didn't vote for it, and it was misleading to me. It was misleading to you. I don't know if you guys get compensation for this, this kind of stuff. And I know like Ms. Brown and her husband and Isadora Hall, they got real estate license. So do they get commission for selling city property? I just wanna, and, and another thing, I hope, they took my bishop's church from him and, and they told him that they wasn't gonna sell the church. And you know who did it, sitting right behind me. He was part of it. But Bishop McLaughlin is a nice guy. You heard his feelings before when he had that heart attack in here, the way you treated that man? But see, I ain't that kind of guy. Bishop McLaughlin told me, we'll see what happens. They bought that church for one point four hundred thousand dollars, two weeks after he said the church was not for sale. And I know who did it, and I don't know how, how they did it. I don't care how they got the money. But they put that man's stuff on the street, and he's my friend. I cannot let somebody do my friend like that. Eighty-nine years old man. Y'all...
Thank you, Mr. Irons. Ms. Evelyn Gomez? Diana Medel, for the Assemblymember Gibson's office.
Thank you. Good evening, Diana, uh, with Assemblymember Mike Gibson's office. I have a few announcements, so I'll try to make it quick. Um, the first one is the Assemblymember has introduced Bill AB fifteen seventy-seven. That's the California Safe Drinking Water Act, and that's specific to Sativa, um, the Sativa Water Company. Uh, and so this, what this bill is gonna do is gonna be similar to, uh, Compton Community College. It's gonna place a state administrator to take full control and management of the Sativa Water District. Um, there is an urgent clause in this bill that has been added, so we will not have to wait until January first for this to take effect. Um, it will take effect as soon as the governor signs it. Uh, we will need some support from, uh, the Sativa customers and the community and the council, so we will, uh, keep the council updated as to where, uh, the, where the bill is going. And this bill is gonna work hand in hand with LAFCO's decision to dissolve the Sun, the Sativa Water District. Um, and again, we'll keep you guys posted on where the bill is. Uh, it's currently going to appropriations right now. We have our second nonprofit workshop coming up. We're in partnership with, um, the laws, uh, the Compton Library. And so we are bringing that to you on the tenth of July from five to seven, again at the Compton Library. We are putting together a Day of Action Against Gun Violence. That will be a rally. Uh, we are calling on all, uh, community residents and constituents of the Sixty-Fourth Assembly District who have been hurt by gun violence to come out and rally with us. We want to send a message to Congress to provide, um, everyone with stricter gun laws. And so that will be on July thirteenth on the corner of Manchester and Vermont, and that will be from six to eight. Thank you.
Mr. Adolfo Vargas, oh, he's no longer here. Um, I'll call you, sir, after the next speakers that have signed up. You'll be directly after them. Ms. Joyce Kelly.
I was in upper management for over twenty-six years. And one of the things I learned was cross-train. People act like you've heard of it before, and when you cross-train, there is no need to, um, increase a salary. Do not think about moving to Heritage House. And Career Link should stay where it is. You should fund it because it's helping people to get jobs in this city. And it's been there for years, and people come here. I know people. They've even gotten bus driver jobs. Give me a break. Let us have something. You people who don't live here always want to give something away, or people who are not even telling the truth. As far as, I, I want to warn the people in Compton. Or am I correct when I see one million eighty thousand dollars for the reserve? Is that something that if there is a natural disaster or something where you need to help the people, over one hundred thousand people, this is the amount of money you have to help them with? About eleven dollars each? For how many days is that going to last? The budget does not make sense. Could somebody please tell me what this reserve means? State Controller says you have a person who's out from HR continuing to make money. You guys are not straightening up. Now, I'm gonna have to have the people to call the State Controller back and for her to bring some help too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Ms. Boone? Ms. Limboon?
Limboon, City of Compton. I would like to know, on item number seventeen, how was the gas tax money used out of compliance? I know any of my questions, no one never answers them. And I just want to know, when does this council actually conduct a review on a city manager? I don't know, because this city manager does things wrong, and it just, it just boggles me that no one ever conducts a review on this city manager. You know, the city is vested in, in the city council, not in the mayor, in the city council. And there's five members of the city council. On June the fifth, uh, councilperson in District One asked the question, who signed for the fellow? Who signed for this person that the mayor decided that she had to take over to the transit? City manager said no, and Ms. Brown said she did. That was illegal. And I stated this last week when the councilperson in District One, who happens to be my councilperson, was not here. That was illegal, not just from the standpoint of the city, but from the state. You cannot use our money. You cannot do anything with our money as an individual. Things have to be voted on, and we're back again to these events that have not gone across the dis. No one is saying or doing anything. I read something that's gonna happen on June the thirtieth. Who's paying for this? There's another farmer's market. Who's paying for this? You know, and the city manager, nothing is supposed to be happening unless it goes through the city manager. This is why I'm saying, who's reviewing him? How is this stuff actually, how are the city employees actually doing anything without the city manager knowing it? How did Ms. Brown get the keys without the city manager knowing this? When is somebody reviewing this city manager? Because he is not doing his job. Evidently, something is wrong up here. And if your councilperson is not doing their job, then your voice is not being heard out here. Tonight was the first night, and I have to tell you guys, I'm proud of you because you actually spoke up. Because these people out here were thinking that the mayor runs the city. But tonight, you guys actually spoke up. And I speak up for my councilperson. You guys are gonna have to start doing the right thing, and that is creating policies because you haven't been doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. Sir, would you like to speak and just state your name for the record?
Anthony Mahama.
Thank you.
Eight oh four Burris. Been in this city for forty-seven years, okay? Uh, understand this. Uh, now I'm looking at a, I'm hearing that we're gonna do, uh, that you want to dissolve the commissions. And I know when you guys get up there, you guys need to speak up into the mic because you guys got a very lofty position, and you have a, uh, should have an excitement working for this city, okay? Not mumbling and nobody can hear you out here, okay? Now I see that you want to dissolve an Oversight Committee for Federal Grants, uh, funded monies. Uh, we actually look at those mon, I see that you have a sweetheart deal for three years for Volunteers of America. Who actually looked at that program? I didn't see it. It didn't come across my desk. I'm a commission for the Federal Grants Advisory Board. I didn't see it, okay? So we giving them a sweetheart deal when we should be funding the Career Link? Because those, those young adults, eighteen to twenty-five, need jobs. They need to be searching for jobs. They don't need to be, uh, uh, whatever this Volunteer of America, what do they do? They're from Wilshire District. They're not even from Compton. So how do they care about Compton? And we need to get the county out of our city. I mean, we, we, we paying the county to do our elections? Why we, and we paying the county to pave our streets? And we have funds from HUD that we should be developing our own street repair for the city? So this money starts circulating within our city. This is basic one-on-one, you know, budgeting for, for, for cities, municipalities. Come on. Let's get, now we have a resolution, uh, number fifteen, a Resolution for City Council Keep Families Together Act. Look, let's, let's, let's get with that. Let's keep our families together. That one of the biggest divider or separator of the family is the county. You cannot have a man, i- if a woman goes to get a, go get the county, then a man can't be in the home, okay? Let's, let's, we should jump on that Senate Bill Act, and the first thing of keeping our families together is right here in the city. Okay? So let's get it together, y'all, okay?
Madam City Clerk?
Madam, madam mayor?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
One question. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The funding, the CDBG fund for Career Link was not approved by the FGA?
So FGA doesn't approve, um, let me, Volunteers of America actually, uh, applied for the grant, and they're working, partnering with us in the city. FGA, um, takes cor, community development block grant money, which, of which a portion has to be or can be given to community-based organizations. This money that, um, Career Link is using has nothing to do with FGA's responsibilities.
So it's not, it's not a part of the money that, um, when the applications are submitted to the FGA committee?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Councilwoman Zerita, for that clarifying question. Madam City Clerk?
We are now on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Consent items are routine and expected to be non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion unless a council member requests for an item to be removed or discussed. Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvan?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Cherie?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item number, are we up to number six yet?
I'm, I'm ready to go there.
I'd like to pull item number six. Uh, I asked for this to be pulled last week, and if we could pull it, uh, this weekend and not to bring it back, thank you.
How come you want to pull it?
No problem. How come you pulling it?
Because you directed me to.
I, last week, not today.
So last week it was my item to be pulled, and so I pulled it, and so I'm requesting that it be pulled this week.
Why though?
Because I think it's inappropriate.
Well, that's a decision the body has to make.
I don't understand. How, how do you think it's not appropriate?
I was, I was really unclear how it was my item last week.
What, what does the resolution say? Whose item is it?
Who made the recommendation, me or you? The request?
You did.
So the item reads, if I could, Councilman, Madam Mayor?
Please.
In summary, Councilman Galvan has requested that city council consider adopting an ordinance to eliminate the selection of the mayor pro temp on a rotational basis and provide a selection that may occur at any time. The background of that is on June fourth, nineteen ninety-six, the council adopted an ordinance nineteen fifty-two, which added Section two dash one point one six to the municipal code. The subsection provided a, subsection A provided that mayor pro temp seat shall rotate between each city council member beginning July first, nineteen ninety-six, with District Two, and continuing in each district consecutively. The mayor pro temp designation would be for a one-year term. The statement of the issue is whether the city council desires to change the procedures by which the mayor pro temp, uh, is selected. Um, when this came before the council body last week, the councilmen stated that the item was my, um, was my item, uh, and the question came up whether or not to pull it, and so I pulled it last week, and so I wasn't sure why it was on for this week.
The reason that I requested it to be pulled last week was because the whole purpose of me requesting the item initially was so that the body can decide who they want to be the pro temp. The whole body wasn't intact last week because Councilwoman Zarita was not here. So I don't know what the, what the issue is now, and all of a sudden you're taking a full responsibility for it. And, uh, you know, it's cool, but I think the body still decides if the item gets pulled. So I would like the body to vote if the item's gonna be pulled or not. And if the body decides they want to pull it, that's fine, but it's a body's decision to make, to, to make. That answer your...
Is that, is that, could you clarify that, Mr. City Attorney? From my understanding, it's the city manager's item? Which was stated last weekend and this week. Could you just clarify?
I can try. I'm not sure, okay? I think the, the issue here is that last week, Councilman Galvan requested the item to be pulled. I had stayed, I had stated that there would need to be a vote to pull the item or the city manager as staff, because staff is preparing the item and placing it on the agenda. Staff can pull without the vote. Last week, the city manager pulled the item. Without a vote, that's correct. And it appears that this week, he is pulling the item without a vote, as it happened last week. Now, the municipal code, um, there is a section that elected officials can propose items for the agenda. So I would imagine for, uh, I propose for clarity that the manager as staff can pull an item, and elected official can ask for an item to be brought back. And we, you know, both authorities can be accomplished is the way I can see it. But he is staff and can pull an item.
So if I want the council to take a vote if the item stays tonight or be, or is brought back, that's not an option?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
So, 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 Mr. City Manager, do you want to allow the item to stay on the dis? Or do you want us to go through a vote and bring it back and all that? you want us to go through a vote and bring it back and all that?
So my, my confusion is that last week, um, as this item reads, was brought forth by a council member. Last week, um, I was asked to, I was told that it was my item to pull. Uh, so I pulled it and I'm, I was confused about why it was back on. Um, if the council member wishes to put the item back on, he certainly can make that request if I understand the city attorney correctly?
Yes.
Well, clearly there was a misunderstanding about it being your item because it's, it's clear in the, in the ordinance that Councilman Galvane requested the item. So, I, I'm not sure how you want to handle that, Mr. City Manager.
Well, I'll defer to the council member if he wishes to...
I want to vote on it tonight.
On the item.
You can, um, either ask him to bring it back for next week?
Yeah, it, it hasn't been pulled yet. He, he can, he can leave it there and let the council decide.
I thought he pulled it, I'm sorry.
No, we're discussing it right now.
Oh, okay.
Is it the cal, I'll, if it's the council's desire to...
Well, at least clearly more...
Rescind my pulling the item, I can do that.
Say it again.
If it's the council's desire for me to rescind the item of pulling the item, I can do that.
Uh, yeah, I, I, it's my pleasure.
You want to take a roll call? Do we need a roll call, Mr. City Manager?
We can do a roll call when we vote on it.
Okay. I'm just trying to find what protocol.
No, no roll call.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I rescind my pulling the item.
Okay. Madame City Clerk?
Are you ready to take your...
Are we ready for a roll call, Mr. City Attorney? Is that where we are?
I'm ready. No.
Or we need a motion?
No, we're just, I'm just, I'm ready. Item number...
Okay.
Item number six under unfinished business is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Compton amending section two dash one point sixteen of chapter two of the Compton Municipal Code to eliminate the selection of the mayor pro temp on a rotational basis and this is to waive the reading.
Some more.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Uh, will you please...
This is to waive the reading?
Just to waive the reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
And on the item?
Some more.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion?
All right, discussion.
Well then, since no one else is going to speak, I will. Uh, I'm going to make sure that the people understand exactly what my position is in regard to this item. I will not be supporting this item in, especially in, in lieu of cer, something that just recently happened. I most certainly am not going to sit here and vote anything to support, uh, anything that's going to put the power in the hands of one or two people on this council. And also, I have something that a, a community person have given me and asked me to read into the record. And I'm going to take this opportunity and time to do just that. And it states, uh, disingenuous policymaking. There's a, is a severe question about the justification of initiating a policy change relative to how the mayor pro temp is identified. Citizens are aggravated about the unintelligible motivation behind implementing the mayor pro temp reform that has the outcome appearance of acting in bad faith to make an unnecessary, unnecessary policy change, particularly since the mayor pro temp is a temporary and a provisional civic duty selection engaged for a brief period of time until the mayor resumes their respective duties and does not constitute in any form or manner a permanent act. Compton's current process to rotate the one-year mayor pro temp position among council members has shown and currently shows no problem, challenge, or impediment to operating activities. The existing policy for selection of the mayor pro temp provides an orderly and fair procedure for alternating the position of the mayor pro temp each year. The proposed policy change in selection of the city's mayor pro temp references an increment shift in the existing structure without any new and innovative, innovative policy improvement. The proposed change does not describe an improvement in the performance of existing, existing process and does not assure an effective and equitable outcome from future changes in this policy. This proposed change in policy does not address a problem in the current process and does not describe a reasonable solution to a nonexistent challenge requiring change. The proposed change is disassociated from progression in policy change that fosters a non-democratic outcome. The proposed change moves the city council away from unity in operating procedures since the, since it is incumbent upon a very small number of council members to make the selection of the mayor pro temp. The proposed change lays out an ins, in, in stable process for future council panels due to the possible lack of peer support and supportive and collective engagement among existing council members. The mayor is an at-large elected position by the people and therefore, the mayor pro temp must be for the people through a fair rotating process to prevent dictatorship. For the people implies that the primary objective of the government is to act in ways beneficial to all people, including all sitting council, city council members. Designated mayor duties must remain democratic and not act in accordance with a restricted body of two to three. Democracy is based on the idea that everyone should have equal rights and be allowed to participate in the making of important decisions. It is the key element of our government in which all eligible citizens are allowed equal participation, either directly through elected leaders or indirectly by proposal, development, and establishment of laws that run this society. Thank you.
Madame?
Yes, yes ma'am.
She done.
Councilman Sharif, are you complete?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for that. Um, the author should have came up and read it. Um, I'mma ask that Councilman Galvane, give an explanation as to why he requested this item.
I think I, I think I gave a explanation to the city manager a few minutes ago, but I, it's a ceremonial position. I think the body should elect the person that they choose to be on that thing as opposed to have it be somebody on a rotational basis. And I think it's important to have the respect and support of your colleagues, all of your colleagues. So that's why I requested the item and, uh, we're here, we got, we got the votes, voted the first time. We're in the second reading now and then, uh, you know, it got, I don't even want to say nothing, so I'll just stay quiet.
Well, thank you. And, um, I think enough has been said and, you know, you have to be, um, respectable to your colleagues.
Madame Mayor, I hope that if, in voting, if this is passed, that we all work together to be cohesive in one unit. And so, um, my purpose is, I have worked under a council when it wasn't appointed, um, on a base, um, by the city council. They did appoint who the mayor pro temp is. And the only thing I'd like to say is, you know, I hope that we would also give each one a fair chance and not appoint the same person over and over and over again. You know, that, think that we should not just keep appointing the same pro temp. And so that's one of the requests that I would like to see, is that, you know, we do actually allow the others to serve as long as they're willing to, um, you know, serve with the others, but as well as, we can't keep appointing the same one.
I agree.
Okay.
I don't understand, I personally, I don't understand why one person feels the need to make this so personal about them, like this is an attack on them. If the col, if your colleague supports you, you will be appointed. And it would mean more because your colleagues voted you in. So I don't understand that. It's amazing.
It's not a, I mean, it's just a ceremonial...
Madame Mayor? I believe, as a matter of fact, the statement was made at the council meeting by one of the council people that said straight out, point blank, that I did not deserve and was talking about me and stated this, did not deserve to be mayor pro temp because of the fact that I did not, what was that? I was not a team player.
I don't remember that.
I did not work with the council. So I'm still in confusion as to what does that mean, you don't work with the council? What does that really mean? How does that, what does that look like? And, and that's why, so I might guess, like I said, is that, no, I'm not going to put any, uh, uh, after what just recently happened with this council? No, I, I'm not, I'm sorry, I cannot, I will not support this. In light of what just recently happened, just recently, a couple of days ago, I'm not doing this.
We should vote on it.
I'm just telling you, I'm not going to support it. It's up to the council, it's what you guys want to do, but my position is that, and it's not personal, but I'm just telling you what you actually said here on the council. Now you made the statements, I didn't. And the community heard what was stated because that's the reason why I ended up with getting this, a letter here from, uh, uh, from one of the community people that asked me to read into the record. That was the whole purpose in it. But like I said, is that I'm not going to support it. I've been, I've been very direct as to why I'm not going to support it. Now it's up to the council as to what you guys want to do. But if you, so, but I've already made my decision about it.
So I didn't hear why you didn't want to support it. I hear, I heard why the community member didn't want to support it.
I told you I was not going to support it. I said I was not going to support it because I'm not going to sit here and put the power of, of, of anything into hands of one or two people. That's what I stated, I'm not going to do that.
It's three. What are you talking about?
Well, three people.
It's, it's at least three.
Well, you don't need my vote.
Did I say I did?
Well, you, you guys still having a conversation. I've, I've been very clear about it. And like I said, I, I have made it very clear as to what my position is and that's it. So.
Roll call? So, you know, before, I'll just be really brief. Yeah, I'll, I'll just be really brief. Um, the current system affords for an equal rotation, which is what I heard Councilwoman McCoy state that she hopes happens. There's a policy in place that already affords equal representation for disposition, which chairs the meeting when the mayor is not present. Um, I don't know anything else other than the function of a mayor pro temp, other than chairing the meeting when the mayor is not present. If we're fighting over the rotation as to who chairs the meeting when the mayor is not present, I, I just think there's...
Who's fighting?
I, I don't, in my opinion, I'm going to continue my statement because this, this doesn't seem like there's cohesion going on and there's obviously different sides, I'm going back and forth about it. So, um, but again, it's, it's up to the pleasure of the council, but I would just hope that we would, um, remember what the position is, which is to chair the meeting when the mayor is not here. Seems pretty simple to me. Um, roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
No.
Mayor Brown?
No.
Item number seven under new business is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton approving the engineer's report of Will Dan Financial Services for the City of Compton Lighting and Landscaping Assessment District Number One, charges for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen.
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? Um, Mr. City Manager, could you just give a brief, um, summary of this item and the items after this relative to the public hearing for the members of the public?
Um, Mayor? Madam Mayor and Council, um, as happens every year, the protocol for receiving, uh, levying charges and assessments in the landscape and lighting and, lighting district as well as the sewer, uh, uh, district, an engineer's report is required. Uh, the Will Dan Company comes out and they are contracted to do, um, the study for us and submit, uh, the documents that are in the clerk's office will review. Um, and this is, uh, all required by law for the council body to consider and legally levy the fees and charges, uh, for both landscape, the lighting, as well as the sewer fees.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Lighting and Landscaping District Number One for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen.
Some more. Second. Discussion? Um, this item is the same as the, the previous item, just for the record. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number nine is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton approving the engineer's report of Will, Will Dan Financial Services for the City of Compton Sewer Service Charges for Fiscal Year Twenty Eighteen Nineteen.
Some more. Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number ten is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Compton ordering the levy and collection of assessments for sewer service charges for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen.
Some more. Second. Discussion? Mr. City Manager, same as the other items?
Yes, this is all connected to the public hearings.
Thank you, sir. Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number eleven is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Compton regulating all off-site and on-site alcohol sales points, land uses, and this is to waive the reading.
Some more.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
No first reading?
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. City Manager?
Again, uh, Mayor and Council, this was presented in the public, uh, in the public hearing section. It's an ordinance of the City Council to regulate the ons, uh, off-site and on-site alcohol sales.
Thank you, sir. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita?
Yes.
Galvane?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Item number twelve is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen.
Some more. Second. Discussion?
I think we should hold the budget for another week. We just, I just got my book. I don't know about you guys. Did you just get your book or you had it? I just received one.
I, I looked at my, my previous, probably the one I got last week, but you weren't here. But, um, if we hold it, we will have to have a special reading. It has to be adopted by June thirtieth.
It don't have to be. I mean, there's no penalties if it ain't. It, it doesn't.
There's a lot of things that can't move forward if you don't...
Not necessarily. It, it's happened. I mean, it, it's...
It happened when I was on the dice.
It, it always happens. Um, I mean, if you guys feel comfortable and you just got your book, then hey, I can only speak for myself.
I just got my book today and, uh, I don't feel comfortable adopting it tonight either and, uh, it was just said a few moments ago, we're on another item, that we should work together and I think that if, we should make sure everybody up here is comfortable because we're approving, you know, tens of millions of dollars worth of, uh, services and stuff. And I think that it's wrong to just hand it to somebody and, uh, say, okay, here it is, we're going to do a presentation and then they're going to approve it the same night. And, uh, I've talked about this for five years, since I've been on this council, that we should start the budget hearings way sooner than we really do. And at, this is, happens every year, at the last moment, we're always rushed to approve a budget, so I share my colleagues', uh, feelings.
What, what is the pleasure of the council? I, I know we have been reviewing the same budget for the last, um, several weeks, but I do not want people to feel uncomfortable if they just received their budget. Everyone's got the opportunity to review it, except to the pleasure of the council.
I don't have a problem with passing a budget tonight, but hey.
Councilwoman McCoy, would you like to move forward, or please?
Uncomfortable.
I've reviewed the budget as well.
Um, you wanna review it?
No, I've already reviewed the budget, this is what we've been reviewing the last several weeks. Any additional discussion on the item? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
No.
Galvain.
No.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton authorizing the city manager to execute insurance binder agreements with First Insurance Funding for Renewal of the City's Insurance Policy Portfolio for Fiscal, Fiscal Year 2018-19 in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Sommo.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. City Manager, could you just give a summary, and then I think, Mr. City Attorney? Mr. City Attorney?
Um, Mayor, City Council, this is our insurance portfolio resolution that, uh, goes into effect July first. We were able to, uh, save approximately, um, fifty thousand dollars from last, from last year. This is our first year with Alliant Insurance Services as a broker, and our policies are crime, directors and officers, employment liability, public entity, uh, general liability, excess property, difference in conditions, excess workers' compensation, athletics, general liability, group accident, uh, commercial, auto, physical damage, uh, dollar ride, auto, and the special events. General liability policy will be renewed in December, um, for six months to June thirtieth. That way, the following year, all policies will be on the same schedule. And the total amount is not to exceed one million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for the description and clarification. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvain.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number fourteen is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year lease agreement between the City of Compton and Volunteers of America of Los Angeles for indoor space at seven hundred North Bullis Road.
Sommo.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, yeah. Mayor, I do have some discussion.
Yes, ma'am. Um, would you mind if we allow the city attorney, I'm, excuse me, the city manager to give a brief description, and then we can go into discussion?
If that's not, whatever, whatever's your pleasure.
Could you just give a quick summary of this item, so that we're all on one page with the public as well?
Uh, Mayor and Council, um, Volunteers of America is requesting some additional space to run, uh, a, um, Section Eight Housing Program, as well as, um, working with, uh, homeless issues here in the city. They're requesting, uh, approximately twenty-six hundred and forty-one square feet in the vacant, um, Career Link Annex Building. Um, they will also be sharing that space, uh, periodically with the Sheriff's Department, as well as the Human Trafficking Task Force, uh, on their operations. And they are requesting, uh, they were offering a dollar, um, sixty-seven cents a square foot for the office space, and our, our actual cost is one ninety-seven a square foot. But to offset those costs, Volunteers of America has, uh, will provide the maintenance service, um, and, uh, the minor, minor repairs, uh, to the, uh, location.
Uh, I think it's a dollar sixty per square foot, not a dol- dollar sixty-seven.
I'm sorry, one six, I see one, I see the ninety-seven here, and I, or, I'm misread it.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Councilwoman Zarita?
Um, Mr. City Manager, so, this is additional space, this is where Volunteers of America are already?
No, ma'am, the Volunteers of America, it's currently housed at six hundred South Alameda.
Sixty north, north.
I'm sorry, north, north, uh, Alameda, this is, um, um, additional space at seven hundred.
So, this is to help administer the, the new grant?
No, this is a grant for that, uh, not the, uh, grant that we discussed earlier. They are... This is a different grant. Um, I do have a representative here, but in essence, what they are, uh, providing is a Section Eight Housing Program, as well as, uh, some homeless services out of this particular location. There will be no homeless people housed there, but they will be servicing the homeless here.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvain.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Uh, yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton supporting California Senate Bill SB thirty, thirty-six, Keep Families Together Act.
Sommo.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvain.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton amending the twenty seventeen, eighteen fiscal year budget to transfer funds and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with and establish a purchase order for Total Corporate Solutions to provide refurbishing of the entire city controller's office in the amount of one hundred and five thousand dollars.
Sommo.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, yes. This is for staff and the controller, this is the entire suite?
Yes, ma'am, this is, uh, and, uh, the controller's office has been renovated, uh, and the furniture has not been changed out in a number of years. They are, um, looking at, uh, better spacing, spa- space planning, they had a space planner come in, uh, and set up all their cubicles. Uh, it'll provide for more, uh, adequate workspace for the staff, uh, and provide, um, new furniture that is ergonomically correct, uh, and assist the staff in performing their functions. And, uh, we also have increased staff, uh, at Council Direction for that particular office, uh, to assist in the functioning, uh, of the city with the controller's office, as well as coordinating those efforts with, uh, the treasurer's office and other financial, um, entities within the city that operate the city's financial situation.
Thank you, and for the record, I wanted you to explain that. Um, I believe it's very important to be comfortable in a workplace. I think that is like my number one priority. And when the last two controllers were here, I couldn't believe the condition of the office. And when I saw this, I just wanted to make sure that Ms. King didn't pick her out a hundred thousand dollar office. But I'm glad that it's for the entire office, and I, and I hope that this will include some new filing systems that we can, um, implement in that office. And, um, Cesar Rambo was nice when he said, a few years, I don't think that office has been furnished for prob- probably over twenty years. So, congratulations, and I, um, look forward to visiting that new department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvain.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number seventeen is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton authorizing the city manager to amend the fiscal year twenty seventeen, eighteen budget, issue a purchase order to the state controller's office, and return funds in the amount of seven hundred, eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars for non-compliance in the Special Gas Tax Street Improvement Fund and Traffic Congestion Relief Fund, and reimburse other funds for unallowable borrowing, borrowing of highway users' tax accounts.
Sommo. Second.
Discussion. Uh, Mr. City Manager, could you just give a summary of this item, um, for the benefit of the public?
Uh, Mayor and Council, in summary, um, we are required to pay back, uh, repay funds that were, uh, disallowed, uh, that were used in the past. The, uh, the city charged six hundred and fifty-two thousand, uh, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars of unsupported costs to the Traffic Congestion Relief Fund for fiscal year two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and fiscal years two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Um, the city also failed to spend a hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and five dollars, uh, of its fiscal year money, two thousand six, two thousand seven, Traffic Congestion Relief Fund allocations by June thirtieth of two thousand eight. Uh, so, with those two, uh, issues, the city must repay that money, uh, and we, this is all part of the corrective action, uh, plan with the state controller's office.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
Um, yeah, ma'am, just, can you say that again, a little louder, Mr. Rambo? What was the years that this money was misappropriated?
The first, uh, the six hundred and fifty-two thousand, almost five hundred, six hundred and fifty-three thousand roughly was in the year two thousand seven, two thousand eight, uh, in fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand ten. The, uh, unexpended, uh, funds that, uh, should have been spent by June thirtieth, two thousand eight, were in years two thousand six to two thousand seven.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any additional discussion?
No, other than, Madam Mayor, um, Mr. City Manager, can you bring back another update, um, soon as to where we are with complying with all of these, um, state require, state, um, um, information that we don't have, that we didn't do?
Yes.
Bring back an update soon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvain.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Uh, yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number eighteen is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton authorizing the city manager to enter into an, a contract with and issue a purchase order for Hollywood Carpet to replace carpet in the city controller's office, uh, in the amount of eleven thousand dollars.
Sommo. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Counselperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvain.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Sharif.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Um, just for the matter of the record, I'm sorry, um, for the benefit of the public, there were three bids that were received, um, for this specific, um, service, and staff recommended the lowest qualified bidder. Yes.
Counsel comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilwoman Galvain?
Yeah, um, I wanna thank, uh, all the residents that attended my, uh, homeless, uh, task force meeting last week. We had, uh, close to forty people in attendance. I wanna thank the sheriffs, uh, the city attorney who made an appearance as well, as, uh, the city staff, um, for coming out there and all of us put our heads together. And, uh, you know, we, uh, residents that didn't know some of the process that it takes to remove a homeless person, but, um, I think we're on the right track, and I'm gonna be hosting another one, um, in the coming months. So, I wanna, uh, thank everybody for coming out for that again. I wanna close in the memory of, uh, Dave Rosa, who was a Long Beach, uh, fire captain, who was shot in Long Beach, um, recently, so I wanna close in, uh, his memory. And also, I wanna invite everybody to my fifth annual Back to School Backpack Giveaway, Saturday, August eleventh, at Looters Park, from ten AM to one PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Zarita?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Brown. Just very brief, uh, I, I'm gonna request a, um, I wanna say significance, but I don't know if that's the right word, uh, history on the Heritage House. Um, because I do know that it was not the first house in Compton. So, I just wanna know what the significance is of this house. Um, secondly, I just wanna share this with y'all. Um, I was at the Beauty Supply yesterday, in Compton, in the first district, Juliet's. Anybody ever been there before? I know most of my folks shop at Juliet's. So, me and my daughter was in Juliet's yesterday, um, and, you know, we have a whole lot of hair product. We buy hair product, curlers, whatever we need. So, um, my daughter, who's twelve, dropped a four-dollar bottle of Clear Econo-Gel, and it broke. So, my daughter was like, oh, no, and I said, that's okay, I said, I'll just tell, you know, the lady. So, I called the lady that, she, the lady that owned the store happened to be in there. So, I said, excuse me, I said, I'm sorry, um, I dropped this jar, this jar of gel on the floor. And I mean, this lady did an exorcist on me. Her head spun around, and she got to hollering and screaming, and she said, I just spent five hundred dollars on getting this carpet cleaned, and, and I said, well, I said, I'm sorry, you know, I said, I didn't mean to drop it, and, you know, she said, well, it's the way you said it. And I said, well, what do you mean, how was I supposed to say it? So, there were two other ladies that were at the counter, and, um, one of the ladies said, she said, I'll pay for the gel, and I said, but that's not the issue. The issue is she don't like the way I said, I'm sorry, that I didn't mean to drop it, that she just got her carpet cleaned. So, then, she went on to say, so then my daughter was like, you know, oh, my God, you know, I'm sorry I dropped the gel, and I said, that's okay, don't worry about it. That's, I mean, that's expected in these type of stores for people to drop things, and it was clear. And so then, I went on to tell the lady, you know, I'm so sorry, we had about, we had eighty dollars worth of stuff in our hand. And I told the lady at the cash register, I said, you know how much money I spend in here, I come in here at least once a month. And so then, the lady that owned the store, she got so, it remind me of the Latasha story. Um, she got to hollering and screaming, and she's, she snatched the stuff at the counter, she told me to get out of her store, she told me ten times, you get out of here, you get out of my store, you get out of here, I will not sell you nothing, and I'm like, hey, let me just buy my product and get out of here, and I'll never come back again. No, 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 you get out of here, you and your daughter, you get out of here, don't come to my store no more. You, you have an attitude, you get out of here, get out of here right now. I mean, it was horrible, it was so horrible, that I'm still talking about it today. That's how bad it was. So, you guys, y'all go to Juliet, if you want to, and spend your dollars. But I told the lady, I said, you know, this how you wanna treat a person of this community, when you here making all our dollars? You know, you, you making all our daughter, dollars, but you wanna disrespect me and my daughter like this. So, all I'm saying is, I will not be shopping in Juliet, um, Central and Rosecrans ever again. So, I left there, and I went all the way down to Sally's, where they, oh, hi, good to see you, you know, with some respect. So, I, you know, I'm, I'm very particular about where I spend my dollars, and if I spend my dollars, I wanna be respected, and I respect people. I was at her mercy. So, I want, my daughter was, as you know, it, it was horrible. And, and it was just so, so happened, on the TV today, I don't promote violence, I don't promote ignorance, I don't promote going off on people, or none of that stuff. But in the, on the news today, it was a lady that got provoked in the nail shop. And she was dissatisfied with her services, and she knocked over a couple of, uh, nail polish racks, and, I mean, but sometimes people can just provoke you, and, and people need to respect you. When you in their facility spending your money, they need to respect you, because I was always taught the customer is always right. So, I'm just telling y'all, Juliet's on Rosecrans and Central will not get another one of my dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes, ma'am, um, just a few things. Mr. City Manager, um, I'm requesting that, um, we send a notice to the owner of the property on Central in a hundred and fifty-six, it's a vacant lot there, and, um, ask them to clean it, it's getting to be, again, um, warm season, and I would, would just like that lot cleaned, so that we won't have a fire or something. And then, also, the, um, I know that we have to notice the property owner on Tejada and Compton Boulevard, but could we also notice them and ask them, could they clean their lot? And if they don't, then could we please take appropriate measures? Um, you informed me that, um, our, the bids will be back for that traffic signal on, what is that, on the twenty-eighth, uh, is it this month?
This week.
This week, they'll be back on this week, so thank you for that. Um, and, let's see, the lights in Raymond Street Park are, is out, the, and it's very dark over there, so I'm requesting that we get the lights back on over there. That's, um, the perfect place for mayhem, and we've had a situation there before, so please, please get the lights back on as soon as possible over there at Raymond Street Park. And, um, let's see. I got that. We have a creek cleanup on Saturday, June the thirtieth, uh, beginning at eight AM. We will gather at Parmally and El Segundo, and we will go down El Segundo to Rosecrans. So, if you feel like coming to share in, um, take part in the cleanup, please come out and join us, we will be there Saturday morning at eight AM. And then also, um, there is a Flavor Fest at, on Saturday, the, the thirtieth, at, from twelve to six, at the YAL Center. And then Metro is having a public-private partnership workshop on June the twenty-seventh, at eight AM, at the LA Union Station, eight hundred North Alameda. You can RSVP at eventbrite.com slash Metro, or you can, there will be onsite registration. And our own Compton Fire Department, um, Fire Chief is having community coffee. Please join the Fire Chief on Monday, July the eighth, I mean, July second, at eight-eight, from eight to ten, at Fire Station One, two oh one South Acacia. Come out public and, and meet your new Fire Chief. And then I will adjourn in memory of a fifty-year resident of District Three, Birdie Baldwin. She passed away, and she was a resident of Sunny, I mean, Richland Farms for over fifty, for fifty years. Her services will be on Saturday, June thirtieth, at twelve noon, at McKenzie Mortuary, three eight, three three, East Anaheim in Long Beach. And that's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Zarita?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Uh, I will be hosting Compton's quarterly business roundtable on Wednesday, July twenty-fifth, from ten AM to twelve, at the Dollar High Community Center. This is an opportunity for you to network with local businesses, meet law enforcement and city staff. Our guest speakers are David Ford from S, uh, uh, from SCE, uh, Southern California, Edison, Cesar McGlynn of GSR Corporation, and Deborah Watson Triggs of State Farm Insurance. A light lunch will be served, so please come out and join us. Uh, now, on the upcoming events for Metro, I'm, I'm going through this, uh, my colleague, uh, Ms., uh, McCoy just mentioned this, uh, Councilwoman McCoy just mentioned this, but this is, uh, the Metro Workshop is on a three-P process, uh, and they need to share information with, uh, small businesses. Because Metro is currently planning its first public-private partnership, uh, project, uh, with the West Santa Ana Branch Transit Corridor Project and is loo- looking to engage with certified disadvantaged business enterprise, uh, other small businesses interested in getting certified to work on this project. It's very important. Staff will be conducting a three, uh, P three, one oh one workshop, uh, for DEB, DBs, DBEs on Wednesday, June the twenty-seventh, from eight AM to twelve PM, at the LA Union Station, T- Ticket Concourse located at eight hundred North Alameda. So please, if you're interested in working on these projects, please go to this workshop. The address again is eight hundred North Alameda Street, Los Angeles, nine zero zero one two. And, um, also, the Community Intelligence is called for letters of interest, if you know anyone that may be interested in, um, um, a paid public health internship. This, um, application's deadline is for Monday, July the second. And, um, the internship starts the week of Monday, July the ninth, and runs through Friday, October the twelfth. If you need information, you can please, uh, should you have any further questions, you can please e- email arrorendallhenry@communityintelligence.org. That's R- Randall, R-A-N-D-A-L, Henry, at communityintelligence.org. They're looking for paid internships for the medical field. And, uh, Mr. City Manager just mentioned something about the Supreme Court ruling about the local government collect, use tax on own sale. There'll be, uh, uh, income coming into the community, so that's, that's really great. And also, uh, there seems to be, the employees at the public workshop, they were saying that they needed water. They have a cooler, but they, water's not being delivered there, so if we could possibly make sure that the water is there for them because they need to be, make sure they stay hydrated. And, uh, could you please provide an update on the light allergists on the medians located on Alondra Boulevard between Santa Fe and Mayo? Because I know they were supposed to have been ordering some supplies and everything in order to try to get these lights up and going, so please, because, so I would like if you could just give an update as to where we are as far as getting that done because it's really dark right there, um, between, uh, in that area. And, uh, also, I got a call in regarding Target. There seem to be rumors about Target closing and I really wanted to just dismiss these rumors. Uh, Target, and I did speak to the Atlanta owner, Target is not closing. However, they are doing some upgrades there at the store, so it may appear that they are closing, but they're not. And, uh, so far, Target seemed to be one of the stores that's doing extremely well here in the city of Compton and so they would not be closing. Again, Co- Target is not closing. They just really doing upgrades. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sharif, um, especially for clearing up the issue with Target.
Yes.
I know that that is one of the, um, constituent matters we receive a lot of requests about and I'm happy they're reinvesting into their store. I'll be really brief on tonight. Just a reminder that the Measure P Oversight Committee meeting will be held June twenty-eighth at five thirty PM at the Community Meeting Room, which is just in this room in the back. It is open to the public, so please come out. Also, Compton Open Mic Night is Thursday, June twenty-eighth, starting at eight PM at the Dollar High Community Center. And the Mid-Cities Association Farmers Market is June thirtieth. This is the last one, um, for the month and it is Saturday, again, June thirtieth, from eight AM to two PM. And there, there were a few comments regarding the farmers market and this is being done at no cost to the city. Um, this is a great opportunity to partner with the local organization that has served in the city of Compton for many decades. And so we are happy that they chose the city to reinvest and bring some fresh vegetables for our residents. Also, um, Councilwoman McCoy mentioned the Hub Radio Flavor Fest. Um, our office is also a supporter and that is June thirtieth, from twelve PM, um, at seven hundred North Alameda, which is the YAL. Food trucks, live music, golf and fun for the entire family. And, um, as usual, there are great events happening at the YAL, so thank you to the YAL team and the sheriffs for continually to support, um, great events and great organizations that are doing great work in the city. Like Mr. Holyfield. He's looking at me. Um, but no pressure. I wanted to, I, I received some great information today, um, about our city clerk. She doesn't know I'm going to announce this, but she.
That's right.
Um, our illustrious city clerk has continued to, um, extend her education and her ability to serve our citizens of the city of Compton and that's to be commended. And she has earned the designation of Master Municipal Clerk, MMC, which is awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Give her a hand. And this prestigious designation is only provided, or excuse me, only designated to municipal clerks who complete demanding educational requirements, um, which is why sometimes she's out of the office, and who have a record of significant contributions to their local government, their community and state. And so I just salute you, Madam City Clerk, for your continued learning and, um, for enhancing your service to the citizens of Compton.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thirty years.
Thirty years, three decades.
Thirty-six, to be exact.
Thirty-six.
I'll take my six years.
She wants the full six years. I'm, we gotta give it to her.
I do.
Um, and also, we have, um, Blue Line Maintenance scheduled for June twenty-ninth to July second. Metro will conduct maintenance repairs on the Blue Line, which will require the closure of two Blue Line stations. Willowbrook Rosa Parks and a Hundred and Third Watts Tower from nine PM on Friday, June twenty-ninth to three AM on Monday, July second. There will also be a street closure east of one hundred and nineteenth Street from East Willowbrook Avenue to West Willowbrook Avenue during this time. Free bus shuttles will be available at the stations mentioned above and service will be maintained through Metro Bus Line five-five-three-five-five that runs along Compton and Willowbrook Avenues. So please plan accordingly. And there's an upcoming Seven Ten Livability Initiative Community Meeting in East LA. Please join Supervisor Hilda Solis, Metro and Gateway Cities Council of Government at an upcoming community meeting at the Seven Ten Livability Initiative and provide your input on how to make local streets near the Seven Ten Freeway safer and more accessible for pedestrians, bicycles and buses and rail users. It's really important to have Compton, um, represented so that our input can be provided as these plans are continuing to move forward. And we had a representative from the commission actually come and shared their various plans, which included Compton. They had three different, um, iterations and so we will continue to keep the community apprised of these updates, but this is an opportunity to provide your input. And I'll table that one. Just really quickly, Mr. City Manager, if we can receive an update on the maintenance of our pocket parks and especially the one that is off of Elm and Willowbrook. It is in just really poor condition and I know that we have, the ultimate goal is to repurpose these pocket parks into development opportunities and maybe that's one specific area that we can focus on, um, some housing development or something quickly that would alleviate our need to maintain that area. Thank you, sir. Lastly, I just want to give one more reminder for people to come out to the Measure P Community Meeting is very important. We remember, um, there, I see a lot of Measure P supporters, um, that were integral in, in helping that measure pass. And we do recall that some of the, um, I guess, pushback from some residents were that they believed that our sales tax would actually decrease over time. And as we see Measure P is going strong, our taxes are increasing, um, and the city is stable, but it's important to ensure that these funds are being used accordingly. And I just want to thank members of the public that did voice, um, their concerns and their recommendations for the expenditure of these funds, which are reflected in this budget. And we will now close in the memory of Dave Rosa, who was the Long Beach, um, Fire Department, I believe he was the captain, that passed away in the active shooter incident, um, just a couple of days ago in the city of Long Beach. Our condolences to his family, um, and to their entire department for, um, him losing his life in the line of duty. And also, we will close in the memory of Ronald Eugene Malakai, former Compton PD Sergeant, and Catherine Harris, sister of former city clerk Charles Davis.
Bernie Baldwin.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one. And also.
Bernie Baldwin.
Bernie Baldwin.
Yes.
Please forgive me. May we have a motion to close?
So move.
Roll call?
Councilperson McCoy?
Yes.
Sharif?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. Thank you and good night.
Did you say Ronald Malakai?